Yeah, I'm glad you're not. I'm not that good. They're all gravel all over the country out there. And now the woman's opened another bit out there. I've gravel longer and come to all of that way on the road too.
Did you guys see the picture and there was a plane move and it was all over the internet? Of the scene on Highway fourteen southeast of Willsey on fourteen. I think head west. Where that. That one actually was for a few years ago.
I heard about it, but I didn't see the picture.
Where was it at?
Yeah, why them telephone poles look like that?
I don't know. And who where were those hills in the background?
It looked like they zoomed in from a great distance to get that picture.
Concentrated all of the poles in one little spot?
You know where the bridge on fourteen is? Robbing the road track?
Yeah.
It's in between them.
That's where it was?
Yeah, we were we were coming back from uh Lake Preston and and got detoured north on the Robben Road.
I think I was just over it like a half hour before it happened. Do they do they know what happened? Why the guy going to the other lane?
He's all super distracted driving, I'm sure.
I'm running down the bathroom quick, I'm gonna start. Does anybody else need?
Will you go for me too?
Yeah. Go for all of us then.
I was wondering where you might live today at Jim? Yeah, I was wondering, I figured there'd be something.
I want to let you guys know too, I've been on antibiotics for more than twenty-four hours, so I'm technically not contagious anymore, but I do have my last of the next is I will try to make sure I'm not contagious. If you find it out, I have been on antibiotics this year. Contagious. I don't have COVID, I don't have RSV, and I don't have this, but I just have RAS. Get that out of my hotel. I was there, she tacked it all over my.
Annual creeping crow?
I'm a trick or treating.
Child would take care.
Oh, yeah.
I have a Cephalosina.
We got good.
No, well, Cephalosina, you don't feel careful. Especially for me, I'll be fine with that. So there we are, sitting in the same bed here.
We when our kids are in school, the kids are going home.
Well, eventually, eventually, I'm sure.
You should see how much we did. I just didn't very seldom.
How many trick or treaters did you have?
I don't know.
I only had twenty-five.
We went out, we of course went out, so we were home for a while. And we probably had. I don't know, we kids.
Did you go that rocker trip?
I do okay myself.
He's done by the nursing home.
But yeah.
With the topic of discussion on the radio news on the radio last couple of days.
I tried to get through the most at home. See grandma.
What percentage of your kids can you?
Just went around, I guess.
Think that people eat. Forget one thing, so the damage was nationwide like eighteen or nineteen percent. Seventy percent, oh, I mean, twenty-five, thirty percent, since ten percent. The guy on the radio says ten percent, you liars.
My uh my grandson.
Right, and you might run my hair.
This one's hockey.
Bring the November second meeting to order. Luke, for anybody that's watching, will not be here today, will be absent. Rest of the board, have a period.
The only thing that's worth talking about in the consent agenda is we have those site dump trailers that were purchased last year. And Carolyn and I were talking about taking them out of the regular budget process for the highway requirement, making them part of long-term debt and debt service. So just want to know if you guys object to that.
Did did we uh? End dumps or?
Side.
Side dumps. Side dumps, the ones that we approved.
Those were belly dumps, I'm sorry.
The ones that we approved uh last summer, towards the end last summer. Did we not budget to pay for those?
That year.
Pardon?
That year. But by slipping them into debt service, we would no longer have to pay them for the bulldozer, because we paid that off.
Yes.
It seems like a natural fit. If it matches currently.
What's left on them?
Do we need to approve that?
Well.
Or is that perfect?
I think it's good.
You know how much is left on them?
There's three, there's four tables, we have five.
So we just put the down on them. I wouldn't have any problems with that, let's do the correct place forms when you're tracking.
What uh?
You don't need a separate motion.
I would mostly approve the consent.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
In your folder, you'll find the quick claim deed and certificate of real estate value, which for that property that's sold. And so. I think it's reasonable to assume that the chairman has authority to sign it, but if they're safe and sorry, we're gonna ask you just to make a motion to approve the site dump.
And make that motion.
Second.
Still looking for it.
Watch stuff. Do I have copy? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turn.
Are you supposed to be here?
I will sign for you. Place out.
And then I think the second was just used already, you send it up. There.
There too.
And then we have Sarah Newman at the meeting last month, but because she wasn't on the agenda, we had to carry over the action until this month. And so we all pretty much agreed last month to continue the victim witness coordinator, so the agreements are in the folder. So if you would be surprised, you moved to approve those.
I will. Motion to approve those.
Second.
There's two copies.
I should have turned them off by then. I should have remembered.
You got a farm? Sure to take one home.
Got your all four of those had as part of that package that we approved?
Yes. I'll go find it, it's on the desk, you can send it.
We have a motion, second on that.
Then I'll get Brandon so she can visit with him.
All agreeable?
I think that's the next thing down.
Yeah, we need to self-approve this. Right?
Mm-hmm.
If we both. So I'll have my sign for you. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Close. We'll get that one, everybody bring it in here. Time for us all. The agreement.
Oh, sure.
Oh, there.
I am Randy, please say a lot it. I am just here to do an entrance conference, so I have. This is for the chairman. I have copies for you as well.
Are these copies for us?
Yep. And this one's for Doug. That one I handed you down there was put to the last page, but just because we're gonna sign that one. Okay, I don't wanna go through this whole thing, so it's a lot. So I'm just gonna touch on a few things, this is just our routine audit, and you guys know what we're here for. So we're just confirming our understanding of the services that we are providing Hand County. This is as of December thirty first, twenty twenty, and for each of the years in the biennial period then ended, so we're just covering nineteen or twenty this time. We will perform a financial and compliance audit of the financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the county as of December thirty first, twenty twenty. And for each of the years in the biennial period then ended, and the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the county's basic financial statements. And we understand that the basic financial statements of the county will be presented in accordance with the special purpose framework, the modified cash basis of accounting. Our audit will be conducted with the objective of expressing an opinion on each opinion unit applicable to those financial statements. Down the audit objectives, our objective of our audit is the expression of our opinions as to whether the county's basic financial statements are fairly presented in all material aspects. And that's with respect. Things with assets, in conformity with special purpose framework, modified cash basis of accounting, and to report on the fairness of the additional information referred to in the first section above when considered in relation to the basic financial statements taken as a whole. The objective also includes reporting on internal controls related to the financial statements and compliance laws, regulations, contracts, great things and other matters, non-compliance with which could have a material effect on financial statements as required by government auditing standards. If during the course of our audit, we find that we are unable to express unmodified opinions on the fairness of the financial statements for any opinion unit, we will notify you of the problems encountered. If for any reason we are unable to complete the audit, we will not issue a report as a result of this engagement, but we will bill you at our standard hourly rates for the value of services rendered. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair representation of basic financial statements and all accompanying information, as well as all representations contained therein. As part of the audit, we will provide guidance with the preparation of your financial statements and related notes. You are responsible for making all management decisions and performing all management functions related to the financial statements and related notes, and for accepting full responsibility for such decisions. Now, the county has requested that we provide assistance as a non-audit service in the compiling of notes for the financial statements. This non-audit service does not constitute an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, as we are simply performing a non-audit non-audit service of compiling information from your records. You are responsible for making all management decisions and performing all management functions related to the notes, the financial statements, and for accepting full responsibility for such decisions. You are also responsible for the design and implementation of programs and controls to prevent and detect fraud, and for informing us about all known or suspected fraud or illegal acts of affecting the government involving management, employees who have significant roles in internal control, and others where the fraud or illegal acts could have a material effect on the financial statements. Your responsibilities include informing us of your knowledge of any allegations of fraud, or suspected fraud affecting the government received in communications from employees, former employees, granters, regulators, or others. And then our procedures will include tests of documentary evidence supporting the transactions recorded in the accounts, and may include tests of the physical existence of inventories, and for confirmation of receivables and certain other assets and liabilities by correspondence with selected individuals, funding sources, creditors, and management institutions. We will request written representations from your attorneys as part of the engagement, and they might bill you for responding to this inquiry. Our fee-fee services will be based on the time actually spent at our standard hourly rate, as determined in accordance with the state statute. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, our rate is still in five dollars an hour, and is subject to change each July first.
Are we required under law to engage you for these purposes?
What do you mean?
Are we, do we have to provide? An audit in this form to the state of South Dakota?
Yes.
Then why does it say that you are providing these services to Hand County?
What do you mean?
You're providing the services to the state of South Dakota. The other ones are required.
We're this is just for the audit of Hand County?
Yeah.
I guess I'm confused as to where your question is.
We're, I think his question is, we're required, we're required by the state to be audited and then get billed by the state, is that what you're getting at?
We get billed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and they have, excuse me, but the other guys, they just say that we're the ones requesting the services, because they're telling us, they're providing us the services, like we are requesting.
Yes.
We didn't.
Yes, um, that's probably mostly because of state standards, the way that we are required to audit your guys versus having a third party do it. Um, it's probably why it's worked that way.
We did ask them.
Yes, we come every.
I know, I know.
Yes.
I just think it's curious language.
Yes.
To describe our arrangement.
I agree with what you're getting at.
Yeah, I can ask about that if you'd like. Yeah. Um, let's see, oh, I want to let you know that we will not bill you for travel times to come into and from your location, or for times spent giving assistance or working on other projects while on-site at your location. And then government auditing standards require that our office undergo an external quality control review on a periodic basis. A copy of our latest external quality control review letter will be provided to you upon request, and is also publicly available on our website. And that's what is listed there. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you, and believe this letter accurately summarizes the significant terms of our engagement. Does anybody have any questions today?
Do they make you read that, assuming that one of us does not?
What do you mean?
That we can't read, do they make you read it, thinking that one of us maybe not be?
Oh, no, we're just.
The search provided us.
Oh.
I'm officially summarizing what we're doing for you. And so.
And you're fine.
And and to be clear, I I anyway, I can't speak for the rest, we're not picking on you, we're picking on the state.
That's okay, I understand.
The the state says you will be audited by us, we will send you a bill, and here's the disclosure of our oversight, of your oversight. And.
Thanks for requesting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Too much, too much government, too much government, that's my my opinion.
I follow.
But we appreciate what you do.
Okay, then yes, I need that copy signed. And then, let's please. I need this one signed as well.
Hold on, you have to speak. Having to be here.
Actually, I already got it. Um, I don't have a lot left.
You've been here for a couple weeks, haven't you?
Yeah. And this one is your copy.
Okay.
This one on that file, or I need your picture on that one.
It's seventy-five dollars an hour.
And after the meeting, if I could tell the chairman to pull out.
Providing the services.
This rock just from here. So that's it for me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you should charge the man for the facilities.
Rent an office space.
There's several things of wonder that'll come up on that, and I don't know, I'm I'm kinda excited about having a comment. I kinda like all of it, but I do crime insurance. Easiest thing in the world is be audited every year, so with the backlog here. No, it's a fact.
Yeah, this is true.
Very valid point.
Yeah, and this is true.
Yeah, because you catch them six blocks hundred.
Catch them soon.
I just don't like their word of their stuff.
Yeah.
But like, a lot of them is what we call big farmers. We all do, I hear that. And then they're gone, like a little bit, everything's gone. So, because rather redundantly keep doing something wrong two, three years in a row, and then signing it back in, going to try to fix it all, it's a lot nicer to fix it quicker.
Right away, do you like IRS personal audits too?
Yeah. Last one they did, they gave me seven hundred and fifty bucks back. I don't pay myself a point with that. But doesn't bother me, because once they do it, you're done. Now you're going forward. Okay, where we at?
That one faster than I would, so you can actually pull some of your head up and budget here and one thirty if you want.
Okay.
What are you doing, Shane?
Shane, you want to get done early today?
Hey.
We're good, we're good, both. Just hate to see an ambitious guy sit around looking at me.
We were just gossiping about you in the back.
I know. What a waste of time.
Well, I um. Oh, I am, I guess if you could bring up that proposal, there it is, perfect, this is my proposal for my, uh, this is a quote from for my computers for the cars. Totals at eleven.
Eleven three.
Seven six. Um, I've been working through nu- numerous uh grant programs. Um, I know I can get them next year with the Homeland Security Grant. Um, so I know that that is an option, it ends in February, the application process ends in February, and they will probably have the computers out in September, is when they start issuing equipment coming from that grant.
What happens to the old ones?
Well, the old ones we have are table, that are desktop ones.
Not mobile units.
Not mobile units. And they're pretty, they're pretty outdated. Um, these we would would replace those, so they would be, our mobile ones, we'd bring them into the office, they would be.
The force will also be.
Yeah, we wouldn't have two, so um. But I would like you guys to consider, um, I do have a letter of a request for the ARP funds. As an option that I believe falls under, does everybody have a copy of that? And that wasn't to the drug control fund, this one's for the ARP, I did apply to the drug control fund and.
I'm gonna base off this sentence, that's what I thought it was.
Oh, no, that's just. That's just more of me bragging, so.
More power to you.
Right.
No, I.
So I would like you guys to consider, um, just using that ARP funds for those computers as it relates to COVID, it keeps our deputies on the road and, you know, working off our computers out of the office if we do ever come to that point again where we have to shut down the offices to one person only and and things like that.
So we wouldn't have to wait for reimbursement? To pay this, we could pay it now with funds that we already have.
Right.
And then would be, would we be reimbursed?
Well, that's the great debate.
Okay, we don't know yet.
That's the great debate. I've talked to some that have or that believe so, and some that don't, so it's just, I mean, a lot of, a lot of places say, yeah, we did it, but they obviously haven't been reimbursed yet because all that, you know.
It's nice to find a home for this at least.
Right, so.
Is restricted, this is the thing.
Yes, and I believe that, the way I've read it, and I should have brought some stuff, but um it um is supposed to be used for public safety and COVID-related. Problems, so I believe this fits with public safety and.
You want a motion?
Restrictions, so.
Why not just buy them now?
I don't care how we get them, to be honest with you, but I'm just saying that that's.
That's what we were.
Well, he has, you have nineteen thousand that you were gonna use for a vehicle, but you bought the vehicle last year.
Right.
You still have nineteen grand in your capital.
Okay, can I buy that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
Because the ARP funds, they're not issuing any payments yet, no?
Right.
And they hired a accounting firm, ID Bailey, and they still haven't produced anything in this kind of month.
We'd be kinda dumb after that, wouldn't we?
Buy them out.
Yeah.
He needs them now.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, otherwise, if you waste your own life security, it's next fall.
Right, is that Homeland Security something you can apply after you bought them?
No. No.
I don't think those are funded either.
That's not our carryover.
I don't think they have to send behind if we've already paid for them.
Right, no, and that's why, that's why that's up to you guys whether, you know, we'd wait to submit it and do it that way. I'm looking, to be honest, I'm looking to get them as soon as we can, we've got our Zerker program, we're supposed to go live in January, and everything's coming along great, that's obviously a big hiccup, I had more faith in the grant systems and.
The the ARP money you're talking about is that like six eighteen or whatever that we were.
That's money that nobody wants to spend because they're afraid that they're gonna get stuck with it, because they're not clear on it.
It would only be that we would have to refund it, correct? We would be penalized, so the money is, is money, the money is sitting here, I mean.
He has money in his pocket right now.
But it might be in a different year when we find out, right?
Well, but what I'm saying is, we would only have to refund the money to that ARP fund if it wasn't supposed to be paid for out of there.
Right.
That way you'd use it for Jim, Jim's saying it's for him, but that way.
If we.
If it does come true, it'll be delegated to that, if it don't come true, we gotta do it.
You gotta pay.
We gotta pay for it anyway.
We're gonna end up paying for it.
The trouble with that, we would go through a budget process to take money from the ARP fund, supplement it into your budget, which has enough funds in it to already buy the items. It doesn't make sense. If they're going to bank with our money that you already have in your possession, just to put in a budget, it already has enough money to buy the items.
So the ARP deals are a waste of time, so that's.
I don't work as if they didn't spend one penny.
And this uh, this nineteen thousand dollars that you, that is still accounted for in his budget is being available just through the end of the year, so you've got.
Because you had the bottom card.
You can afford to buy them right now.
Is this a current poll?
Yes. And that's for everything, that's for the mounting brackets, the docking stations, the computers.
Who's gonna do the installation?
Should've got that for you, that's probably me.
Do you have, oh. The docking stations. Is there screens and so forth out there too for like in the office?
You know, we already have monitors.
You have these monitors there?
Plug them into my monitors when we're at the desk. Or not.
How long this process been going on?
Six months at least.
Yeah. And I've really been trying not coming asking guys for it, so. Cause I know I said I would get great money for it, but it's just. Nice, the doctors, I thought it was.
I made a move that we accept the big con proposal and go forward with it.
We got a motion on the floor.
Purchase them out of his budget?
Yes.
I will second Jim's motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
You guys are getting Christmas cards. Thank you. We would have won it anyway.
Huh?
They wouldn't have gotten it. Thank you, guys. Does that make sense to the?
Yes, okay.
To move that money from one fund to another fund, almost replace funds that already exist.
So just get that other fund deal, throw it in the waste baskets, we don't have to talk about that again.
I think your four-year indemnity plan would give you a city for water credits.
Oh, it's a city around my own pocket.
What'd you hear from the jury?
Um, in my district meeting last week, Department of Ag and two chemical reps. Said that we, everybody should buy their chemical this fall because you might not be able to get any in the spring, and it might be way expensive. On what it is now. One or two four D went up from eight bucks to like twelve somethings since last Thursday.
And it's headed north from there, you said, that?
The one stuff we use for bear ground, you can't even get. So that'll be something else, it's just the same but different name. So, that'll be something else. It's just the same, but different name. The milestone's up about twenty dollars, but Max Corner is going to honor their price for the twenty-five gallons they got sitting there.
Just for the record, because we're talking about it ad nauseam, what did you do with the chemical that was previously stored in the office area?
I tucked the two four millers in line more and I put it down in the east shed where the oil truck is. And I moved the containment stuff out there and stacked it out there so it's not in the office area anymore.
Oh, good. I tried to lower right near corners of the room that they were in.
Okay.
But the top one on the left, lower one where they are now.
Okay, good. One of them tried to scrub that up and try to get the smell out of there.
I had the containment deal. I haven't bought that for yet, but... One of the bad spells is because the main cold air term was in that room, so it was sucking everything right through. And for the milestone shield, that's about eight grand for that. And she won't, she said we don't have to pay her until next budget season for the first year. And I still got five thousand in my chemical budget that should cover the rest from the other two dealers.
If, uh, if you were to, um, start purchasing next year's, would they want it delivered or would they want you, want you to take possession before next spring?
I think so, yeah.
Probably. I guess if you can get your hands on it, you better get it. Um... The, uh...
If they're storing other chemicals, if you got it bought, they might keep it there. They gotta store chemical year-round anyway. They just irritate if you, if they were paid for it.
If it's paid for.
At least a warm sleep.
Pardon?
It'd just be that much less you have to store.
Yeah, because we don't want to, that, that's what I'm thinking is we don't want to, um, aggregate our already storage issue that we have.
So, are you asking us for permission to pre-purchase those items for next year out of this year's money?
Uh, part of this year and part of next year.
Okay.
But she said some of it you wouldn't have to pay for until next year.
Right.
Yeah, she, she'd hold it for us there.
But you can add it to your budget. I'll, for this year, whatever excess you have, pay your, pay her that much.
Well, the other five thousand I got, but yet I need to get the other stuff from the other two dealers. Then that eight thousand for the milestone could come out of next year's. So, it'll be about two grand from the other two guys, approximately. Maybe a little less.
Well, I don't think anything we can do to contain our costs, and they're bound to go up now.
Yep.
We better be doing it.
I think you start emptying them ships out there or something out there.
What's that?
I think start emptying them ships out there or something out there. I know it'll start coming again.
Yep, the, uh...
Do you just need consensus? That, that's all we need, he says.
He already has a contract for all of it, right? Each of the department?
Yeah, it's up there to go up just a little bit.
So, it's really just an administrative decision that you put in the side.
Except for the pre-purchase in the next year, you know, we should have, at least have a consensus to it, but that's okay.
With, um...
Because you're spending next year budget money then.
Yeah, when do we normally do bidding?
But that's kind of take, makes sense to take advantage of the price now, especially if it's still unpaid for it until the first year.
I want to get like a hundred and fifty gallons of my two forty, and that's twelve dollars, and he says it'll be twenty dollars for one.
But you can get it now at twelve?
Mm-hmm. Twelve eighty-something, whatever, twelve seventy.
Well, I'm for, if we're determining if there's a consensus, I'm a yes.
The only thing that would be the storage, I guess, to me.
You have a pretty good handle on your need per year, what you need per year. It's pretty close.
We, uh, we certainly, uh...
For us, for us somewhere, I got twenty-five gallons of milestone, and we use that. And I bought another five gallons, so we use about twenty-eight gallons of it then.
We certainly, uh, don't want to get caught without chemical, so... Or pain through the nose for it, I guess.
Well, the way I wrote it is that you would approve his plan to purchase available stock from your parent members.
Sounds good.
Also, you don't have to store it. You don't have to store it, right?
Well, I think with this current arrangement, storage isn't going to be an issue because if he had that one wooden pallet that was soaked with the...
It smelled, it smelled really bad, and we put it outside and scrubbed it with, on its own bleach, but it smelled better.
And so, if he ends up going to buy plastic pallets, then cleanup is going to be a lot easier to accomplish. Stick it, wood.
I suppose there ain't anything that's not open to it.
It's not, no, anyway.
The big chances, okay, but in their water, I'm still spraying for it.
I didn't have it asking.
I never pick up my line until spring, even if I pre-purchase it. Reason just leaves it set in his warehouse to be all right. This says give Rogers across the side of the box, pay him. Pretty scientific, you know? I don't have a problem. What are you guys saying? You got a consensus at that part?
Yeah. I just see, stores there if possible, I guess, but...
I'll suit this, handle this.
If not, I think we should get the plastic. Those, some of that storage stuff is an asset, I guess.
I got that window open in that room. I got that window open in that room. Where was that? And the door closed, so the thermostat's in the other room, so they...
I'm, uh, willing, willing to bet that the smell is probably already a noticeable difference in there.
I buy that plastic garage cans with the rubber lids on them. These look like two and a half gallon jug, and that one looks like a... Works pretty good. I thought it was in my neighbor's basement. I never noticed that it's in there yet. They just got old crawl space type basement, but they don't freeze down there.
Yeah.
So, I just bought some garbage cans and, you know, I don't carry over that much, you know? Sometimes there's only two jugs in them, you know? A little tight lens on, and it's small. That's where the house burnt down and bowls and all. Anyway, what else? Anything else?
I think so. You guys, we report for how many acres we deserve this year. I have to turn that in to Department of Ag every year.
Where is that at? Okay. We're at one thirty. We need to go ahead with our, uh... Thank you.
So, are we giving him consensus to get that chemical by or whatever we can get? Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as the budget hearing goes, of course, if there's anybody that wants to speak up, would love to hear from you. This is based on the court-appointed attorney fees. It's presently over by eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. And then I included in the chairman's package, a bill that we just got for thirty-four hundred dollars from an expert witness. And that is not in this calculation because it will be paid after this meeting. So, in reality, that is thirteen thousand dollars and change over budgeted. And so, part of this budget request is to bring that back up to a manageable level, which my original request for you was to offset the eight thousand dollars. But now it's going to be the thirteen thousand that you'll pull out of the next three months of potential bills for the attorney. So, honestly, I don't have a solid number for you, but...
Did we get a breakdown at all, um, as to how the three thousand, whatever odd dollars it was, attributed to the, um, expert witness was used?
No, actually...
Per?
I got, yes, it is billed per hour.
And do we know how many hours we got for three thousand?
We were charged for one unit, even though he normally bills per hour, and the judge signed the order on Thursday.
So, there's nothing to go back on, basically?
We didn't have any objection from our employees that were involved in the matter, did we?
I'm not sure they could have said anything if they wanted.
If they thought that the, that the charges were exorbitant, they, they would have made that amount to the judge, wouldn't they?
I would think so. I'm not even sure if they did see it unless they go onto the portal and specific bill for it.
It's certainly available to them.
Yes.
Well, with you, there's much we can do about it.
So, I mean, right now, what I would, what I'm looking at is that we could, before the end of the year, be looking at an additional twenty thousand dollars by court on the terms.
In the next two months?
Potentially.
How many court?
Three.
Three on the docket?
And while it would be four billing months because some of them request payments while the process is going, and others wait till the end.
What would be the source of that budget, uh, money?
It would come out of the...
Contingency?
You can do a transfer if you want from contingency.
Would there be any advantage in doing it that way, sourcing the money there?
Not really.
Okay.
No. And then the second one is the fund that we have to pay for abused and neglected children. This is again, attorney fee that is paid to represent those children who have been victimized. And so, we budgeted seven fifty, and year-to-date expenditures were seventeen hundred and forty-six dollars, so that leaves a negative nine ninety-six. And that was, it one time came up with pay to an attorney. But when I looked at the UJS records, it doesn't look as though we have any abused or neglected children folders open right now. So, this conceivably might take us to the end of the year just by bringing that back to zero.
These are all numbers that we raised i- in Elton's twenty-two budget, correct?
These actually have nothing to do with these terms, right? These are budgets that I manage for you guys.
Okay.
We did raise court-appointed attorneys. We put a couple, I think it was the first year I was here. We raised it from fifteen to twenty using alcohol reversion line.
Yeah.
But, you know, the court-appointed attorneys got a raise per hour. And if they charge mileage, then if somebody's charged with multiple, um, offenses at one time, but they get charged per five years instead of one lump sum for the whole effort. There's a lot of times we might get somebody that's charged with four tickets, four files, and we get the same bill four times.
These, how often are these court-appointed attorneys' bills not refunded to the county? And these, do they eventually get...
Frequently.
There's a lien file that...
There's a lien, but I mean, they, they make payments on them.
Some do, maybe most don't.
Several years ago, the UJS decided to employ, well, state decided to employ a bill collector instead of summoning these people back to court for an ownership causes when they have payments. They haven't really reported where I can see and what their success rate is on that.
And then about every fifteen or twenty years, or maybe more often than that, the legislature passes a special enactment, uh, that retires all of these kinds of obligations for all of our citizens who hold them.
So, so we, we absorb them?
Who are left holding them.
January something?
Mm-hmm.
It's a native decision.
And they're auditing us.
So, you're, you're recommending a supplement.
I think on this particular one, if we did zero out, if we supplement this, then I would... If we supplement the abused children, a thousand dollars is going to bring that back to a positive balance of four dollars, or twenty-three dollars. And then I would recommend that we go twenty thousand dollars on the court-appointed attorneys. That will take up this eight, eighty-nine hundred dollars plus that thirty-four hundred dollars and leave it some for the next three months.
Three?
Three billing months.
Oh, because if we'd be paying, yeah, in check.
Because activities in October, we won't probably see until the middle of this month.
So, for law, identity, area, school, package, and general fund?
It just doesn't get spent.
If it's short, then we have to stop doing it again.
That's correct.
We're going to have to reschedule no matter what.
I'd some, I'd make a motion, we do the twenty thousand.
And zero off the other one.
Court-appointed.
And a thousand in events of abused and... Second.
Yeah, a discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Okay, that's it for the budget hearing. Our next hearing is in three minutes, which is the, uh, orderly stuff.
They might get right for a couple minutes here.
Got to have such a figure out on hand. Hate to inconvenience you.
Nice, quiet crowd.
Yeah, I'm for that, if you want to.
You know, a couple minute break?
Yeah.
Good.
Well, I thought you wanted one.
Sure, yeah, I do. Gets me a smell of coffee and that one more piece of candy. My blood shirt is running a little... As if I got a...
Well, shouldn't we have some of this stuff?
No.
It's health food?
Yeah.
What's the nutritional value of a Whopper?
The saturated fat in a Whopper is as high as it is in any food on God's brain earth. There are eight grams in a normal serving. Any brand of Whopper you buy, any brand named Whopper or its equivalent, every one of those grams of fat is saturated. I don't know why a product would be, would have that kind of nutritional profile.
Without having a poison label on it?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Rock, stick here. Am I loving Whoppers? That's sad, we need to...
You're the rock that's always... You're the rock that's always...
No kidding? That's sad. Very sad.
I hate these miniature candy bars. You can just eat them all day long because you never have a hole in them.
And then you're burned with all that trash.
Yeah, I love the trash.
See your chances moving out your dust control machine? Do they need reload? Get it. Did you get your B and D out?
Jim loved my little kids, he's got a little candy boy.
They said they don't bite it. What's going on? Usually in a month or so, I take off my cheesecake and ready to work.
Well, I'll tell you what, these comes to additional expenses that we pay for, whether we like it or not.
It makes you wonder why you do a budget, really, you know? I know you've got to be a hall, ballpark. They should name this, I think, as a ballpark budget. Because it's just continually... And then everybody around is scared of all this. Guys, girls, whatever they get, and you know, unload it off and then vote. Well, eventually, when they start getting their price, they want all that stuff, and votes are getting unloaded.
Share.
They won't leave them shit sat out there for...
I have an odor meter up here.
I have a little ground.
Read that question three times now. Still, I got it through my head.
Hey, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. The first thing that we have to deal with is the first reading of ordinance in two thousand twenty-one dash zero three, which is the one that we worked on at the last meeting. We gave you two conclusions about content that was sent to state charities off... We gave you two conclusions about content that was sent to State's Attorney's Office. You have returned it, which appears on the screen. And so, at this point, if you wanna move forward with the first reading, you simply read the title instead of for a second reading, which would be either December seventh, unless you wanna do a special day for a second reading.
So, the chairman just needs to read the title?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero three, an ordinance of the county of Anne, state of South Dakota, creating licensing provisions for cannabis establishments. Be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Anne County that the new ordinance created licensing provisions for cannabis establishment is as follows.
Okay. Does anybody need a refresher on any of the ordinance?
No, I don't. Do you guys?
They are as they are in print.
I have one question. Does this include the growing of cannabis?
No, I believe this is just medical, isn't it?
Dispensers.
Dispensers. I don't know if they can grow it right in the dispenser. Guess I've never heard that question asked or answered.
I foresee no commentary to my office.
I haven't heard anything made by
I haven't heard anything either.
Okay, so what do you want to say for the second reading, date-wise?
We'll go to the next meeting? The December meeting?
I'm with me.
You do?
That's just a suggestion by the chair. It's up to the former.
We all said it was okay.
Good.
December seventh, then?
Yep. Ooh, that's a date that will live in infamy.
It is. Shall be. Okay, so that takes us to the second readings, and the very first one is the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, which was the ordinance that repeals the ordinance of last year, you know, COVID temporary restrictions. And I received a comment from my office as it relates to this one. So, if you choose to move to approve the second reading, it will be published by the newspaper this coming Saturday. And if nobody takes it to referendum, it will become law on the twenty-seventh.
Aye, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on ordinance twenty twenty-one oh one.
And because of ordinances, they have to be read separately.
Don't have to read the whole thing, but you need to
Your votes are.
Yeah.
All in favor, Jim?
Aye.
Aye. Jim Jones?
Aye.
Jim Ashen?
Aye.
That other guy.
Arnold Palmer. I bet you give it, you get to vote it though.
Aye.
Okay, so
We're gonna let them vote.
Two ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash zero two. This is the ordinance that would require us to do fingerprint, basic background checks on new hires. And this is both a statutory issue and one for our insurance company. And it went through first reading without any alterations, so again, this would be a motion to approve the second reading.
A motion?
With the same timeline as the previous one.
Second.
All in favor, Jim Jones?
Aye.
Jim Ashen, aye?
Aye.
Arnold.
Arnold. Arnold Palmer.
Yeah, Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Aye from Jim Rogers.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe those two are in your folder for a signature. And then again, it's the same timeline, so we go in the paper this Saturday and then twenty days later, it becomes law. Let me move on to the next one.
Doug, is this next one the twenty-one oh four ordinance amending the Anne County Comprehensive Plan? Is this the first reading yet?
No, this is second reading, because we
We did it right after the approval last time, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, so this is second final reading?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause that was just a comprehensive plan, not the actual Okay.
Licensing.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. So, in this case, it's the same thing. The second reading, if you approve it today, it will be published on Saturday. And then twenty days later, it becomes law.
I knew we approved it for second reading.
Yep, on second.
He doesn't even read it well.
Just the title.
Right.
Where are the, ordinance twenty-one oh four?
Unless the chair wants the second period read it.
I think I'll find it here.
There.
An ordinance amending the Anne County Comprehensive Plan related to regulations for cannabis establishment. Be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Anne County, South Dakota. While we read the section one, please. All in favor, Jim Jones?
Yes.
All in favor, Jim Ashen Jones?
Aye.
Greg Palmer?
Aye.
Jim Rogers is a aye.
I, I didn't get him moved to second.
I moved it, I think, didn't I? Greg, Jim moved it. I think Greg moved it, and I second it. I moved it, and Jim seconded.
Jim, Jim. I had one is Jim, Jim.
Okay. So, you moved to second?
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that. On the other line. Okay, then last thing, yes.
Jim, Jim, Greg, we're aye.
Yeah, it was aye. Yep.
No.
That was aye.
I'm sorry, I heard it was a aye.
No, I said aye.
That's what I was asking.
Me was aye, aye, it was me. That was me, it was aye.
Okay.
Okay, then subsequent to that, on number four, because it deals, apparently, from what I've read with the comprehensive plan, we're required to publish this notice. And so, this is notice of adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four, which ordinance of the county of Anne, state of South Dakota, creating licensing provisions for cannabis establishments. Where is the important part here?
Doug, is this something that the State's Attorney's Office provided?
It is.
Okay.
Ordinance shall become effective twenty days after the last publication.
See, there's a, there's a statute in there that talks about adopting something that is multi-sectional, so instead of having to publish the entire comprehensive plan, this notice gets published and it plays
By reference.
And then, somebody can come to the courthouse and inspect the entire document.
Yep.
Notice
Was that it, Jim?
Yes, exactly.
Notice wants a week or two successive weeks in the official newspaper.
So, just for the sake of being overly proper, could you move to approve the publication of that notice?
I will move to approve the publication.
Second. I have a question. Does it matter? I see the published date and the effective date. Are they gonna come in line or other things?
Oh, actually, I have an effective date on, it should be December seventh, the twenty-sixth, if I remember.
Twenty days later, twenty-seventh, wouldn't it?
But yes, it needs to change to match ordinance oh four, so I'll change those dates. It's captured.
Good. With that noted. Jim Jones? Aye. Jim Ashen Jones?
Aye.
Greg Palmer?
Aye.
Jim Rogers?
Aye.
I see how it appear, one of the closings already is already closed up for intertration for licensing. Or it comes up in another two weeks or something. I hadn't been able to spawn.
My recommendation is to go back at the Arlen member, this man who wants to get approval for some budget transfers.
Should I go down the inning?
He's sitting in the corner.
I need to go down if I want, I'm here.
I thought I saw you leave. You were in the freezer. Are they?
The afternoon today. Still working for y'all around the morning. Your front page is factored.
I don't see what they're not. We're going down. So, the first thing on my list is the mutual aid agreement with Agtagra. There should be a copy, and give us the copy of it for signature. But that is as high as a rescue. If we have to go in the green bin, two problems. Or rescue anybody off of one of the greatest, kind of our highest points in the county. It's a mutual aid agreement with them, that they will come and help us at no cost, we'll help them at no cost during the incident.
Do we have a mutual aid agreement with the county?
Not to my knowledge.
Have we ever done this with them before?
With Agtagra?
This looks like something really new.
This is new. It's just come out, they just started sending it out here last
It was on their accord, I assume, there in those of water?
They offered it. It's up to us if we want it.
Is it mostly for their insurance purposes?
You know, I never asked for sure.
Because usually mutual aid agreements are between governmental entities, not private corporations, purely government.
It could be. That, and that's in most, or just about all mutual agreements, is that we won't hold them accountable unless they're negligent in, in something.
Isn't that already said?
Yes. So, is each of the entities worried in their own liabilities and
But that's already previously said.
I suspect that it might be something that they have to do, that they receive some sort of funding through an insurance company. Kind of the, the more the barrier.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's what it is. This seems kind of wordy. Is it, is it necessary to have the lawyer regret it for any reason? I don't think it would hurt. They don't need it till next year anyway, do they? Let's give it to them.
I feel like it seems like odd thing to request. I mean, that's sort of You know, we do a lot of mutual agreements with, you know, between fire departments
Yes, right.
and those departments and counties.
Law enforcement agencies.
Yes.
But this seems like a I understand the reasoning, but
Says non-exclusive agreement. The parties to this agreement shall not be precluded from entering into similar agreement or first responders agreement with other party.
There's almost an inference from our signing it that we weren't in a position to provide them with any emergency management services unless they were to sign this with us, and that's not the case.
Right, well, this is so that they'll come help us.
Yeah, but it's a mutual aid agreement, which means we're bound by the same terms that they are.
Right.
And the implication is, we weren't going to be otherwise, and the truth is, we are otherwise. In the absence of that agreement, we still have to, of course, come to their aid if they need EM. So, it, I think it looks bad.
Is it, could it be a liability issue for them that covering liability when they come to help? Because Agtagra, Agtagra has come to help the fire department so many times with tankers of water, and greatly appreciated. But, like you said, what, what's, where does this come from now?
You know? I think because of the specialty involved here with these guys that have that specific training to hang from a thin line over ostle water, he might guess.
I believe it is a legal document. I don't think it's fair to our legal department not having one.
I agree.
Order me, yes.
That's what we'll do.
Um, my other agenda item is my budget. If you remember back in, I believe, February, March area, we were offered the L E N P G fifty-fifty special grant money that came available. And at that time, we chose to purchase some radios and a sandbag machine.
Yeah.
Um, and knowing that I did not budget for that because this grant doesn't come around, but maybe a few times in history, just because of the extra funds. So, it's, it's tough to budget for. So, knowing that, that it might put me over my budget, that's where I'm at right now. I got thirty-five hundred dollars left in my budget through the end of the year. And I would like to supplement my budget back with the monies that we've received back from the grants. And you can see in the sheet that I put there. Also in that is the PDM, which is a pre-disaster mitigation plan that's due every five years. Being new to that, I didn't realize that there was a cost to it. I thought it was all grant money and paid, but initially, it comes out and then the grant money comes back. So, that was not budgeted. So, in the end, I'm asking that you would supplement my budget back with the monies that I've received back from the grants for the PDM, the sandbag machine, and radios, which I did find out today that they've all been paid back, so.
Can you think of any reason why we wouldn't do that?
No, it's the formality because of his program. This is considered an automatic supplement, the fact that it can take effect without a hearing.
Okay.
And so, it just requires a motion of the board to approve the funds to be placed back in the reserve account.
Why did we put this budget request at this juncture in the agenda and not up with those other
Because the others require a hearing, this one is not.
Oh, okay.
This looks like to me it should be an automatic, but this just goes back.
It is, but it just requires a motion so that it's in the papers.
So, it's about
Please do that. I'll make that motion.
Second your motion.
And then, my way of looking at here, you have four more lines that will get paid yet, or you're hoping they'll be paid yet reversed, huh?
Uh, nope, it's all paid back.
It's all paid back?
Yeah, but it's just different ways of looking at it. Way my brain works when I'm looking on paper.
Okay.
I think it confuses more people than it helps.
Don't take much from me.
But the, you know, just to kind of go through it, the various funds, if you look down at the third from the bottom, it says grant funds, the twelve thousand two hundred fifty dollars, that's the pre-disaster mitigation funds that we've received in May. Um, then the sandbag machine, twenty-six ninety-six is the grant money received for the sandbagger. And then thirty-one thirty-six is the grant money received for these radios.
Where are we storing the sandbag machine?
It is out at the Weeden Pest right now.
In a building?
No.
So, it's outside?
It's sitting underground.
Is it galvanized?
It is, rain-o-liner. If you understand what that is. It's coated with a rubber.
I think you put it back. I got a, I got a motion. And I got a second from Jim Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poked. Motion could replace the fact.
And then on the other note, the city of Miller, St. Lawrence, Re Heights, and Re Heights Fire Department have all paid their portions, which checks have been received.
Good.
The sandbag machine, I don't know if you guys have seen, it's been in the paper.
Yeah.
Didn't cost any more to have them paint it the way we wanted it. We put decals on it, so I had the wrestlers put on it. And kind of the, back again, that is, they, two thousand nineteen, they sent busload after busload every hour. They had kids out there running sandbags.
Is that the picture right there?
No, I didn't bring it with me.
I seen it, though.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
So
There's a day out there, it looks like it's well-built and foolproof, simple.
Yeah.
Foolproof, simple is a good thing.
Good. I did find it. One has a surplus the other day. They, they got one over there, white collar seat thing. They want twenty-five hundred bucks for using one, so. Well, evidently, if we want another one, we can get another one. I hope we never have to use this one, so.
That's not.
I think that's all I have. If you guys want any questions for me, I'll let you go back at it.
Just for the record, Arlen has assented to come with me to any meetings that the city's gonna have concerning the drainage under in the Commissioner District Two, which is the east half of Miller. And we don't need a court motion or action on it at all. I asked you guys if you consented to our attending the meetings with the city. Uh, and you guys all indicated that yes was okay with you. Just wanted to put that in the record.
Yeah.
We can't, we don't have any authority to bind the county, of course. We know that.
That would be nice to stay a priori.
Yeah.
But since there's been some diversion, something towards town, or whatever they find, but
Yeah, there is several issues out there. Help the engineers see what we saw. It's tough to really tell without the water moving. And I guess, I told the city that I got a couple guys with drones that'll fly it the next time the water's moving, so you can kind of see how.
Yeah. We sat south of the, uh, sale barn out there one day arguing with an engineer out here. Yeah, we sat south of a sale barn out there one day arguing with an engineer out of here. And Swart stood there and he's infinite wisdom, he said, "Well, you can leave the water flows whichever way you want, but I happen to know which way it flows."
Yep, and you sit there and watch it.
Yeah, because I literally know how which way it flows, and if you plug that up, it's going to go right through the houses over there, because it's got to go that way. But it's funny how it is, it's a little hard to tell.
You can't always tell by eye, that's for sure.
That engineer out of here told me one time, and he said, "If you plug water anywhere, it changes path." You have no idea, I have no idea what's going to happen. And I believe him, I mean, it, just water will find a new direction if you don't let it go where it's going, we've been to one. But we've done it all to ourselves, we build roads, we build up places, we fill in places.
One last thing I should note that I didn't put on here, because it happened this week, but we did use the L E P C grant money, that we have to use every year, we have to spend down two hundred, two hundred bucks. Last year we received eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, and we did purchase a hot water heater, brand new one from Surplus, at five hundred dollars, and then a containment for decontamination tent that I had in my trailer for any kind of hazardous incident that we may need that for. So we, I think that hot water heater news, several thousand dollars, so we got it for five hundred. And then the containment was brand new, and it was, it's probably a three hundred dollar item we got for half price, so. So we're able to spend those now, I can put that on the agenda for next month if you want me to, but it's brand money that's got to be spent over the years. And that'll be stored in my hazmat trailer. And then I'd go, we'll leave with the next year's funds, just to continue to get that tent, and we can, decontamination tent up to speed or anything.
The water heater is a portable water heater?
Portable, yep. It's on wheels, it's twenty-eight gallons per minute, hot water in demand. Actually, it's designed for a decon tent like we got, and looks just like a water heater, or a power washer. We can dial it in like a temp sensor.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Thank you, Arlen.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so the highway department, you want me to call somebody in, or if you have, like, a special?
Yeah, let's go through it.
Jeff Henry needs to agree, and he was expecting to be on his feet, but he is not on his feet yet. Alright, so, this is my understanding what he's got. He would like permission to advertise for bids for crushing three-quarter inch gravel for a stockpile in the northwest portion of the county. He was looking for approximately fifty thousand tons of material. So he needs a motion to second to approve him to advertise.
So I'll make the motion.
Whoop, who had it first?
Jim Jones.
Second.
Jim Asher, one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poked, motion carried.
And then item two is to verify a purchase that he made, and I have that up on the screen. He purchased a two thousand and four Sterling, thirteen ninety-five eleven dump truck, hundred and sixteen thousand miles. It also came with snow removal equipment. The truck itself, excuse me, was fifteen and five, and then the buyer's name was fifteen and six.
Was that at that auction?
Yes.
Okay.
Stick D O T through proper way.
Yep.
This was lighter than a second.
He called behind us. And then we have our funds, our trips, money, two days.
Yeah, we got the check for fourteen thousand, so effectively it was truck. It cost us a difference.
Seems like a pretty good upgrade.
He said it's a pretty good truck, he said it's kind of expensive, it wasn't on the first go around, for some reason, it's loaded up the second go around. Anyway, you want a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Better six, I'm sorry.
Jerry Palmer. Jim Asher, one, second. Motion to approve?
Aye.
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 Poked.
The next comment is that Calvin Mbatsik retired, retired. He resigned, he's going to go back. I forgot what this one, I'm making it in Montana. Anyways, kind of one of those states where it can't, it's easy to return to work out there, so. His retirement or resignation was effective without him actually filing one, Chris had forgotten to gather that up before he left, so. We might get it in the future, but he is officially gone. And presently, Jeff is not asking to fill that, so that might come up in the future. So if you would, make a motion to approve his resignation.
So.
Take a little payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked, motion carried.
Lastly is the living authorization for bridge number eight zero three zero, parent sixteen, P C N zero eight eight nine. And the inventory is thirty-two twenty-one ninety-three. We've sent a variety of documents on this, but this is the document that will go out, so they can send it to contractors.
Which one is it, which bridge is it?
Um, I put the number on there, so look, two zero two twenty-one ninety-three.
That doesn't sound like a lot of money, bridge.
I think it's the one with the soybean plant, let me double check.
Well, it's that one north of there, but.
Two twenty-one ninety-three, right?
Yeah.
Three, three zero two twenty-one ninety-three.
Correct.
There's a truss through, it is in the red, so it is in very poor condition. It is presently closed to traffic, it is six miles east and five point seven miles north, goes over the Little Turtle Creek. So this is the bridge removal, this is the one that is opened by a...
Oh, an old iron, okay, that's all it is, is getting rid of it?
Yes.
Okay, I was going to say, that sure doesn't sound like much.
Yeah, last, last month, you did the encroachment, make sure the oil utilities and such stayed in the right way.
So this is going to cost us seven thousand six hundred bucks?
Yep. Yeah, and I broke down the engineering, just so you could see that the engineering accounts for just a scope. The actual deconstruction cost.
Do you need a motion to approve the authorization?
Please, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried, I'll sign this, maybe right then.
So what do they fill that in with? Oh, is that road?
My understanding is that the road will be closed as an order, and then it'll be like this.
They've hit in the road?
No, they'll barricade it shut.
It's obviously not used very much, you know, it's.
I think it sits out in the back.
It does, it's kind of a windy road that goes back in there, and then stops, just shows you the bridge.
Be a lot less potential liability if it were vacated.
I think it's fenced off.
It would, it's a township road.
Yeah, but I think it's fenced off, I mean, you'd have to drive through the gate.
Oh, if they're asking for it.
If the gate's closed, though, you know, I agree with Jim, it's not my property, I hope somebody don't pop over there and want something. But most of the time, the gate shows. Go ahead.
Alright, so the next portion is mine, but then you might recall that we had Toby Quong, who also works for the legislative body, helping furnish these two, uh, hearing reports, annual reports. So we went through nineteen and through twenty, and each of those is in the minutes, but it's also up here on the screen, so if you have any questions related to that.
How'd that go for you, Doug?
You know.
Was that a learning experience or what?
I really wish he could have been here to do it, so I could have participated.
Oh, you got it offside.
Yeah.
Oh, I was hoping you'd be here.
I was hoping so, too. I've had a discussion about giving it, going through it one by one to make sure that I'm getting the information from their source. So we'll probably do it at a later time.
Hard to learn.
But it didn't take me very long, you must be quite familiar with this thing.
Hard to learn, I'm learning current if you're right on the trajectory.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So in this particular case, what you're doing is you're approving receipt of them, because I'm required to furnish them to you. And then they will be published in the newspaper, and Jan is already working on formatting.
Is there anything noted on these by him?
We don't remember, it's just really a statement of where we started and where we ended, so if we look at twenty twenty, the numbers at the top match the numbers in the document nineteen, and then it just goes through what we spent and what we brought in. And then at the end of the year, it's where the balance is, so.
Check the balance, please.
It is.
No surprises.
No.
It's my township treasurer's report with more zeros.
And Jan and I were visiting on the phone, you know, like, we have a line here that says urban development and soil conservation. Well, our urban development is the T I F, because it falls underneath that broad umbrella of description. So to me, it would almost be better if they would allow us to change that and call it the Tax Center for Animal Finance in District. Sanitation is actually the rubble site. You know, so there's just words in there that the average Joe reading, and I go, "What? Soil conservation, nah, that's actually our Weeden Pest." So, there's things like that, that I would like clarification on, if it's permissible for me to go in there and change those to what they really are, and where we're almost close to.
Or be.
Can you?
Can you even quote them right back to, you know?
In parentheses. Need a motion to accept those, please, so moved?
Second.
Second, Mike Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Motion carried.
Okay, so the next item I have for you is talking about surplus property. And basically what it is, you, as a commission, can either do yourself or appoint three others to appraise property. And for low dollar value properties, so let's say, for example, we want to sell this chair surplus. These three people would look at this chair and say, "The only thing that you deal value is five bucks." So you would either do it yourselves, or you would grant these three people, so we can do that. And then we could literally just sell them on the hallway, by putting a note on it saying, "This chair only for five bucks." So we can, we can get rid of a lot of our low end stuff that way, and then if it doesn't sell, we can just, we can dispose of it.
Do the three people who are to serve in that capacity have to be commissioners?
No, they only have to be. They only have to be real property owners.
Oh, and there you go.
And you can actually pick a pool of people, and just have three of them convene to do the appraisal.
Do we have a bunch of junk in that category right now? Do we have some names of people who are willing to serve?
Well, like, if I wanted to buy this chair, I shouldn't be on it, but if Jan wanted to buy it, then I couldn't. So like, when we did that lot down there?
Yeah.
We only needed to praise it for what we had into it, and so I and Sherry and Karen were the commissioners.
Oh, here's my idea. So we head to the department in here, they're willing to do it, and if they want to purchase anything, I would go out and pull.
A stain.
A pool out of state, and pull a pool on the board here.
By short.
Yeah, the third person.
So you're saying Doug would be one of the three, and who are the other two?
Sherry and one of these other.
Well, see, regardless, it could be any of the departments, right?
Yeah, any, just any three.
I think that sounds good.
That has something.
And then if somebody wants to purchase a pool, I'm staying, I can do that.
Yeah, let the commission decide, man.
Yeah.
One of the commissioners. Do you have any concern about selling computers?
No, because most of them, I pull hardware out, and I have a cradle, and we wipe them, and then. We can't take the plastic, this is soaked up, you guys. Ty cannot take the insides of the computer, he can take the metal cases, but I have to pull the plastic out, which I can then put in the trash, and Todd Hanks will take. It's the dumbest thing on the planet.
Here's rules.
Yeah. But like Ty, you know, he's working on that deal where he would have like a dumpster, where you could put TVs, microleaves, stuff that has a combination of metal, metal and plastics, and then somebody will come pick it up, so hopefully, at some point in the future, you'll have that.
Does the department heads know to come through with items that are surplus age, that they don't need anymore, that they want junk and sell? Then do you need?
What we'll do is, we'll take pictures, we'll put them on like our Facebook page, and add them to the paper. You know, just to say that we have these items for sale, if you're interested.
Yeah, they'll list the, a bridge price then.
I think we do.
So if you can't.
We just basically put a price.
Right, and so if you can't read them, a bridge price is a dollar, you know, just whatever place they're moving.
For instance, example, like, I have four old ballot boxes upstairs. They're cool in the sense that they were ballot boxes, and they're round, you know, and honestly, like, people who collect old milk bales and stuff like that would be like, "Yeah, I want that."
Like ballot?
Yeah, they're the best, too.
They're round or square?
They're round.
So what if, what if five people want it one night?
First come, first served.
First, is that how you advertise it, one night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever you guys, the bridge matter, whatever. If there's any discrepancy or whatever, then one of the board members will be one of the bridges.
Right. Okay, so I'll put out a request to see which department heads want to participate, and which ones don't, because.
Which ones want to purchase?
No, participate.
Sir.
A bridge.
Do, uh.
I'd say anyone that's in the, in the building, if there's only one.
Well, Jeff might have stuff, Ray might have stuff, the library is kind of a different creature than the.
The custodian could be one.
Right.
Do we think we should put one person from the board in that group, and it can be, it can vary, whoever's available? Not collect about so much stuff first, and then have one board member and a couple others, or is it not necessary?
Don't matter to me, I don't, you're boring walking if you want to, but. I just don't want to hold up what they're trying to get on, if I might not get it.
It might look better.
I think so, that's my thought.
And maybe we should make sure that one of the two department heads is the department head from which the junk is emanating, because they probably have a better idea what it's worth.
They could certainly offer input.
Yeah, or maybe the people, maybe we go ask, at the highway department, Jeff, what is this worth? We don't know, we're the department heads that are on this committee, we don't know. They worry.
We're all talking about all old dollar stuff here, but it isn't like, it's going to be like.
Ten thousand dollars.
Or operating truck or anything like that.
Right, because there's a five hundred dollar cap. So it would help us just get rid of the stuff that's sitting in that room, the ad and stuff, but yeah, the bigger stuff would have to be.
We just said, two department heads, depending on availability, and a commissioner.
Sure.
Yeah, and it's not like we're going to be doing this all the time, well, maybe three or four times a year, maybe, I don't know.
Maybe it first a little more often.
Well, okay.
Hopefully that bunch enough, pretty good.
Right, it depends on how the other department heads assemble here.
What I'm getting at is you're five hundred dollar threshold, if there's something that, well, maybe it's an eight hundred dollar item, but we're going to call it four hundred, you know? And so that, that's where my concern for protection is, but, well, I guess, I don't know if it's any more protection other than it just implicates us in a crime.
Most of this stuff, it's going to save, put it all in there and take it out to that rubble site. Actually, that's what it's going to save you.
Or to the highway department first, and then.
Yeah, highway department, wait for the sale, surplus sale, and then haul it to the.
And in reality, a lot of it is probably going to have to be a determination made, how long do we offer it for sale before we do just haul it out there? Because, you know, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of junk in this courthouse that I've seen personally.
Policy statement on how it's going to happen, and then bring it back.
Perfect, love it.
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking those actual old ballot boxes might have value, though, because we're going to maybe go back to actually voting in person, and you've got to put your ballot in the ballot box.
I think they're really worth a lot of auction tomorrow, because they're either two o'clock.
There's just a certain market for such.
Masons dip with black marbles or white marbles, rolling down the little trough.
We did that at the fireball, we did one of the black ball.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item is the declaration of some items in surplus, the first thing, the two thousand and fifteen Ford Ranger, the serial number is there for you, this was the vehicle that was wrecked in June, and then we received the insurance contribution back for it. And when you declare the surplus, it would be, disposition would be trading unit.
Well, I was under repression that, um.
I thought we already agreed to trade that in.
You did.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that we don't get in trouble for not declaring the surplus.
Okay.
And then Jeff was going to keep the truck departed out for a while before he scrapped it, yeah.
Yep, so that one would be declared surplus and scrapped out. Last one is two library computers, they're gateways, they were running Windows XP.
Gateway? Oh, what are they?
I think they were nineties models.
I was going to say twenty.
Two thousand two.
We're just getting thrown.
They were using these until last year.
Yeah, we lost their praise then.
They're going to drop, I think.
Yes, these would be junk. And then the next item is the Cessar. Have a nineteen ninety-five wooden desk computer that originally cost three hundred and nine dollars. Based on what I see people selling these for, we bring about ten dollars.
Doesn't have a wooden desk computer, a wooden computer desk. The computer isn't wooden.
It is a wooden desk or computer.
It's not wooden in there. It's part of it.
We'll get that appraised.
The custodian has a two thousand six Crosby air conditioner that originally cost two hundred seventy-five, two hundred seventy-nine dollars. It's inoperable and would be discarded as junk. And the registered deeds has an O six HP laser printer that is inoperable and would be scrapped out. So good. So if you would please declare those items as surplus?
Do you need a form to declare them surplus? I'll send it back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Without even looking at it.
That was painful.
All right, so this is right back on time. The custodian showed up at the right time. Was your guest here?
Nope.
Did he call and say he wasn't coming?
What's that?
Did he call and say he wasn't coming?
Do you have his phone number?
I do. I was expecting to see him up here. I'll tell him what's going on.
Doug, what happened to those doors that we had downstairs that were saved from Maryland?
I think she took them. Will would know.
How about doing our plaque?
Yeah, I didn't want her to get...
We didn't cover the Attorney General's settlement.
This is a very long and complicated document sent over from the Attorney General's office. They're managing a lawsuit against Johnson and Johnson, I believe.
Yes, Sackler family.
Was it?
I think so.
What are you guys talking about?
Basically what it is, is the counties can sign on and say, I don't know, beneficiaries or any participant.
Just give, it's at the bottom of Doug's.
And so basically what it does is I want to sign off to the county. So if there's a distribution of funds, we would be in line to receive those funds. And then the state's attorney had a suggestion about spending on, but I was gonna express his opinion on his behalf, but it's a noteworthy cause that deals with predation.
If we don't object, then you don't need a motion from us then, right?
Right.
Proceed.
I read through.
Did you read through all?
No, no. I skimmed through enough that it looked like there's no reason to not sign on.
Okay, so if you want to do the plaque, I have one that requires the chair and a signature here. And this is the last one that came in. And this is called lots one, two, and three at Hartley Edition, section fourteen, township one oh nine hundred sixty-seven, which is in Sprigley Township, which is taking one section ground, dividing it into three lots. And I do not know if that has been in the state's attorney's office yet. I sent him an email to see if he replied.
Is this for purposes of achieving some sort of estate distribution?
It appeared to me that it was three sisters' family dividing.
They're dividing, they're dividing a section?
Is it two sisters and a third suburb? I only know one of the three.
You're not in Farah.
Dara.
What?
Dara's also three.
Oh, there are three, okay.
So there is one Mylar copy in there, do you have that? These are just painted from the marker and the rest can be done with ink.
Anybody see any reason to object to this?
I guess it's their ground. They can divide it the way they want, but...
You wanna approve each individually or is it a lot?
If there's no problem, we'll all own.
Okay, so the next one I'll show you is the Edner second edition. This is in the southeast quarter, section eleven, township one sixteen hundred sixty-seven, which is part township. You remember the old Edner Dairy out there? Mile east of Highway thirty-five, just south of the county line. Kids is doing a, occupy one acre ground here. This one only requires the signature of me stating your motion. And so again, this one, I'm not sure it's been through the state's attorney's office, but it will be before it's finalized. And then the third is the Rover edition. This takes us back to Sprigley Township. And it's one of mine. This is a three point seven eight acre plot down. And this one again just requires the, I'll show you the two reactions.
So then will we need to be making a motion to approve all three of those plat actions?
Yes, please.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries on all three of the plats. I wonder if we're signing with the Edner Dairy market.
It's the Mylar ones, they're a lot of plastic.
They always take that hard to figure out.
And then leave it open so it'll smear. And then we'll test the other one. We'll just take it then. And then the other ones I think are just...
What's Bradford? Okay, what's Bradford built me?
Oh, don't think...
It's like food and tough.
I think you might have got Bradford.
I'm confident it even...
Could you get that, Red? See, I understand.
I have no idea. It's supposed to be...
Drop it to how Jeffrey did.
Oh, yeah. Should put in your name. I think that should be your answer. If you answer yes, you gotta write a whole bunch of stuff off, right? So, but I don't necessarily think, no, I think everybody in the board should be informed that they're not to be perjured themselves or placing the place.
A very confusing question. The questionnaire for the...
Have Jim write it. He likes to piece roads. His whole life was using things. That was his job.
In particular, this question right there.
Yeah, you're right. I put in a, because you don't answer it, like...
That's an idea.
She wanted the chairman to fill out the order, gave it to him there.
Not to be considered.
Where is this coming from? From the audit?
The lady of all. Read that last question.
This one?
No, I'll up their last guess if I have either one.
Step in, right in the middle. If this employee is not managed by the deputy manager, has management communicate it's abused to this employee, has control behavior, and isn't charged as effective to this employee? It kinda sounds like something Jim was right.
I know.
I hope it doesn't. I think my grammar is better than that. Well...
You ever watch?
Probably. I'm sure she was right, though.
Have you ever seen them guys on YouTube videos, the Boron Brothers?
No.
Google Boron Brothers.
I watch YouTube videos a lot.
Yeah, well, look at the Boron Brothers. So if you get the one that's like number nine or ten, it's things to ponder.
Oh, okay. Is there a big moron there and a little moron? So he's a little moron?
One, yeah, a little moron and a bigger moron, yeah. One's got a beard and one's got a...
I've never met him.
I think there's like volume four hundred forty-four.
Kelvin actually kind of made the mission in today's one. Here it is. These are the statements. And I think there's one thing that troubles a couple of us, and that is why we're looking outside the community for somebody to think. We have people in the community that be thinking.
Exactly.
Right?
Yes, right.
So if you feel to champion that question, I've asked it myself. We have to...
I would definitely, about him and myself, we have to go in the community, why, to pay. If we're gonna hire someone to paint, we should hire someone locally to paint.
What was the first thing you said, Dana? I missed you.
If we're gonna hire someone to paint, we should hire someone locally to paint, not an outside source.
We understand if it's like the gold leaf.
All right, you start with a, like, just a room to paint. There's a lot of people in the house.
And they're bothered. What is it? That's our contact.
That's why we should have...
Greg, does this go to the various department heads?
No, for me to sign for that lady that's sort of...
What employee is she referring to? This employee?
It'd have to be him. How about him?
Maybe she do. Yeah, I took it as, do, have we informed her?
I would take it as him talking about himself. If that's just me, that's how I took it. Maybe we're very close.
Yeah, and I took it as, have we informed her? Do you deliver...
No, really, no.
Perform adequate, what'd he say? Business practices? I don't know. Lack of knowing, I guess you leave a blank, you don't understand.
I guess so.
Well, it's a little hard to inform myself.
You just listen.
Then I just listen. That goes.
That goes.
We'll work on that one time. So what's all these quotations for? I don't think I've seen.
They're linked in the agenda.
Oh, I think.
What might it be?
Do you want to go first, Will, or do you want to talk about the library or the elevator first?
I think they're here. Let's talk about the elevator and I thought, I'll, I'll get started, let you know what's going on and then Randy has something to, to report and your advice or if that's what happens, you sir. There is no danger from the elevator. The elevator is ninety-six years old, but there is no danger from it. And it is not going to fall. The county has spent a lot of time and effort maintaining the elevator. We have a contract with Schumacher Elevator Company. They come out here once a quarter and inspect the elevator and do any maintenance that they find that is needed in the elevator. And they test the elevator during, once a year during one of those inspections. So the elevator, the, the structure of the elevator is in good shape. Doug, do you have a, have those photos?
I showed up to him earlier.
What are we supposed to be looking at?
We're looking at the, the problem that we have on the, the problem that we have is the electronic controls for the elevator up in the, up in the control room on the roof, above the roof. The, what has happened is, is that those are state of the art nineteen twenty-six electronic mechanical controls. They have not made them for several decades and none of them, the critical part had the parts that we need that have been maintained for the last ten years, the, the switches that stop the elevators at each of the floors. They've not been available on the used market for ten years. That stuff right there, there's the heart of the problem. That, each one of those is a mechanical switch and a coil that, that sends a signal to the elevator and the motor to stop at each of the floors.
If we obtained any input from someone or some organization that would be interested in fabricating?
Now, that, that is a possibility and I have, Daryl Waldner from the Colony has been out here. He has been, he has been upstairs. He's taken a look at it. He tells me that he may be able to fabricate one of those. But there's a maybe. And one of the things that would have to happen is, is that, that we would have to turn the elevator off. We would have to have Schumacher come out here or somebody qualified like Schumacher take that apart, take it to them, have them fabricate it, and then have Schumacher come back and reinstall it. That now, that is gonna get expensive. But we may have to end up doing that if we find out that we, because I'm gonna talk to you about the library here later today. There are supply issues. Even if we decide to go ahead and replace the elevator, there's no guarantee with the state of the economy and the supply chains being what they are that we're gonna be able to get what we need to put in an elevator in a timely manner. I am pursuing that about finding, about seeing what we can do to fabricate this stuff. I don't have a definite answer for it yet. Schumacher Elevator, who we've been dealing with this whole time and has over the years given us various estimates. Their new sales rep is gonna be out here Thursday or Friday to do an inspection and start, give us, and start the work and giving us an estimate for a traction system, which is what we have, which, or the hydraulic system. The old salesman said we had to go with a hydraulic system, which meant a hydraulic ram in the basement that pushes just the same thing you go to an auto body, an auto shop, and you see it raises the car up? It raises the elevator up.
But the problem with that is the guts of the system would be subterranean and below the water table.
The water table is, you know, on a way, and we're not in the middle of a drought, the water table is a foot above the bottom of the elevator shaft. So I, I have some, some serious reservations about that, but the new, the guy from Schumacher told me, the new guy said that they can, they could do a traction system too. They're going to, there are pros and cons to each one. What we need to do is, and I'm gonna talk with him about, and he, and I'm, sooner or later, the general manager's supposed to show up here to take a look at this. I'm gonna talk with him about, you know, getting with, getting with the colony and fabricating these things if we need to fabricate it. But frankly, the elevator's ninety-six years old. Those things are literally ninety-six years old. And we can't get replacement. And that's just one part of it. You know, there's another picture that shows the whole control line. There are plenty of other things up there to go wrong that they don't make parts for anymore and the parts aren't available. So...
Do we know for sure that it is one or some of those switches that is the problem?
Yes.
Okay, do we know which switches?
Well, in this past, in this past, and there's, it should have been, see the one that's number two on there in the middle?
Yeah.
That's second floor.
Third one over from the right.
The one all the way to the right starts with the basement, first floor, second floor, well, actually the other way around. Basement from the, from right to, from right to left, basement, first floor, second floor, third floor.
That's the culprit? The one that says two on it?
The one that says two on it. Maybe. Here's what, here's what got this thing started. We've known that these things are getting old for a long time. Two, two weeks ago... Two, two weeks ago, I hear the elevator go up and just keep going, the motor's still running. I start going, I figured there's something wrong, I start, I'm down in the basement, I was down in the boiler room. I came out of the boiler room, heard it going, so there's, that's some of the rest of the control room.
That's good.
So, and those, and that, those are the mechanical linkages below that turn the switches. So there's quite a bit of stuff that can go wrong there. And in theory, any of that stuff is mechanical, it can be, it can be replicated, but it's going to be expensive and it just, we're just, it's just gonna keep going and going and going. Sooner or later, something else is gonna break up there. Anyway, I heard the elevator go, as I was walking up the stairs, Arlen called me and told me that somebody was trapped in the elevator. So I just kept going up until I finally got to the attic. When I got to the attic, the elevator had gone all the way to the top of the rails and the floor of the elevator was two feet above the floor of the attic. There's a mechanical override that you can use to open the doors up. The motor was, I could still hear the motor running. I opened the doors, Arlen and I did, we helped the gentleman get out. At that time, I thought he was, I did not know that he was a citizen who had come to go to the second floor or the third floor. I found him in the attic. I assumed that he went to the attic and Arlen was in the attic and they were up there doing work in the attic. Why else would he be up there? At that point, when we got him out, I told him he was okay, I climbed up to the roof and turned the power off. I turned the power, I waited a few minutes, turned the power back on and the motor was still going. The Schumacher guy came out that Friday, we went up there, turned the, turned the power back on and all of this stuff reset. He couldn't, you know, his estimation was he had worked on this multiple, the technician that comes out here and services this thing has worked on that stuff multiple times, filing, sanding, lubricating. And he cannot find specifically what went wrong, but for whatever reason, when that fellow pushed number two, it went all the way to the attic. So they, we reached, and we went through, he checked everything, we reset the elevator so that it ran it up and down until it got to the point there, see that chain at the, near the bottom? That, you can just barely see the flywheel and the chain. That is essentially a timing chain that causes the elevator that, that is timed so that the elevator stops at each of the floors. It's all mechanical, it's nineteen twenties. The, he recommended strongly that if we use the elevator, that would use it on only as an as-needed basis. I've gone through, I've taken all of the out-of-border signs off, I put on each of the, each of the floors, the three public floors, do not use the elevator without assistance, down on the first floor, there's a sign with the various offices' numbers. And I talked with each of the offices, if somebody comes and needs to use the elevator, have them call the office and then a county employee goes and acts as the elevator operator. I've also warned everyone, do not get in that elevator if you're in the building by yourself. Because you can end up stuck up at the attic until, with the motor turning, until somebody shows up to get you out because there's really no easy way to get out of that thing from the inside. So the elevator's not, the elevator is ninety-six years old. We maintained it as well as we can, we've maintained it very well. The elevator is physically safe and it is not going to break and hurt anybody. It will be, it will definitely, if you go to the attic and you get stuck up there, you're not aware of what's going on, it will certainly frighten someone. But we're to the point now that we're, we need to replace this thing. We have been saving the money, saving money for it at this point, what the, I do not have a recommendation, I just found that out. Randy has not gotten positive word from Otis, I'll turn it over to him in a moment. Schumacher's coming out here the end of this week to start giving us an estimate on it.
We just need, we just need to get that, see which direction we're going.
Yeah.
And talking about it has not taken us any further.
But I, my recommendation is we do that and we go, we see what we can do about getting this thing fixed. So Randy, if you.
I'm Randy O'Shea with Harrison Harrison Engineering. Always good to see you guys, happy to be here. I would point out, you see the new motor controls on the right, we did that for twenty-five years ago.
Swing the one?
The new one, it's over twenty-five years old, so. And I spent a great deal of time and effort tracking on the Otis guys to see if we could retrofit what we have with new controls and door closers and openers and all that. Well, it worked out that we can't. There's a, there's a lot of problems, it's first of all, the electric services that, well, the control panels, just what Will is saying is it's just old.
Yeah.
And there aren't parts for it and they don't make parts. And they honestly said, nothing will meet code and we won't do it. That's about it, so you're, you're right when you say that we can talk about this forever, but they're not going to do it. So what I would propose, we have two options, you talked about, and one's the hydraulic ram system from the bottom. And the other is the traction system. New traction system has been involved some modifications to the building to get the access to the elevator control room up to code, you know, there's no rails, there's no stairways. You know, it's, you can do it, but that's not by today's standard, it takes a new three-phase service up there. So all those things would have to be done in addition to putting in the elevator. Now, Otis can do only a traction system, they can do the hydraulic ram system up to four floors. And this one is five, so Schumacher can do either. So what I would propose is we set the plan to be to replace the car, all the doors, the controls, and then have an alternate for the traction system, then we would have an alternate for the ram system.
What do you mean ram?
The hydraulic ram from the bottom.
What do you mean an alternate for that? The alternate is the traction?
Well, we'd make this, the base bid would be for the traction system.
Yeah.
And then we'd have an alternate bid, a second bid really.
Oh, bid, okay.
For the ram system.
I hear you're good.
You know, but we can't only do the one because then we'll have one bidder probably. I mean, you can do that if, if, but there's some resistance to the ram system anyway. Hydraulic rams, so. So, and, you know, I think we're looking in the four hundred thousand dollar range to do all of that. Depends on, you know, I haven't really investigated how much electrical, but anytime you add that to the project, it's like hanging on to your wall.
Are we done?
I would think it'll be less than that.
You're saying four hundred thousand plus?
No, with the electric.
Oh, wait.
Because the elevator is probably in the two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. So between the modifications to the building itself to get, you know, and then you have roofers and, you know, the right-sized hatch to get up there and all of those kind of things. And then the electric, I haven't really looked at that too much, although it takes three-phase power and there is three-phase power in the building, so that's, so it's doable and it's a good thing, but.
Does hydraulic ram take three-phase power too then?
I didn't, I haven't investigated that, so I don't know.
How many bids have we likely to get?
Probably two, maybe three at the most.
Okay, I can think of two, but I can't think of a third.
When we put it on the builder's exchange, sometimes it goes out everywhere and be surprised. See, we'll get some general contractors to do the actual, you know, they're gonna have to tear out the doors on each floor, redo that. Maybe some work in the, on the shaft and then the work to get up on the roof and all that. But then they'll just get quotes from elevator subs and they don't necessarily, you know, have to be from around here to just send a crew out and put an elevator in.
Do we have to make sure to put in the specs that has to be completed by such and such a date? Because if we don't, they'll claim, maybe correctly, that they have supply chain problems and we haven't did it for three years. They've got the low bid, we can't do anything about it for three years because they can't get the elevator delivered to them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a completion date in there.
Okay.
Of course.
With penalties attached to non-compliance?
We'll have, we can have penalties. The thing is, you always have, if they actually have, if there actually are supply chain problems for everybody, you know, that, that could be an experience, see, let's just say we put the first of January twenty twenty-two for the completion date. Otis can, says they can do it, but they're fifty thousand higher. Schumacher says, we can't make the date, but we can do it for fifty thousand less. And it's up to you whether you want to wait and save the fifty thousand or you, you know, it would be a reason to reject the bid right up front.
Does Schumacher not sell Otis equipment?
I don't think so.
They don't?
They have their own equipment.
Okay, so they serve as own this equipment, but they don't?
They don't sell it, yeah.
Okay.
Again, I looked all that up and I, I knew the name of their, their elevator system, but it's not, it's not Otis equipment. Otis sells theirs.
Otis supposedly has an office in Aberdeen, South Dakota, but if you call the number, you get a national switchboard and they've never heard of Aberdeen, South Dakota.
Welcome to my world, as if I found out the same thing.
So hard.
As I said, it took a while to track down, one time I got a guy in San Diego.
Our only real next step is the bidding process, get somebody out here to give us a bid on.
And see, Will's right, to get an estimate, then you know about, we're gonna be in that range, but I'm here to tell you, until we get the envelopes with the general contractor's bid and it's written down in there, that's what the prices are, until then, we're just talking about this because that's just an estimate.
What if we get a bidder that says, here's my bid, but I will, I will not, I will not serve the capacity as general contractor?
The bids will come from a general contractor. There'll be a guy that's gonna do the, do the doorways and all that stuff and Otis, and that's how they normally work on a building. Otis is the subcontractor and the, you know, the buildings, the elevator shaft and the frames and the doors. They put the doors in, but the guy gets the frame ready for them the way they want it and all that. And then, really, and that's the guy that's in charge of the schedule and getting, you know, because he'll have to get an electrician, they'll have to maybe get masons, have to get roofers, so he takes care of all that, so we have one guy to talk to, one company.
We had extensive discussion about this before, about a general contractor or several other contractors. We decided we want to have one person that we contact.
That's what I would recommend.
When something is a road rat, we want one person that we.
The other thing is.
Yeah, we're not gonna be general contractor.
The other thing he will do is give you, will get a certificate of insurance for, you know, liability, all kinds of anything. I don't know, they drop a beam on somebody or something that's on that. And we'll get a bond.
Performance bond?
Yeah, performance and payment bond.
Yeah.
So that he orders the elevator, leaves town.
Right.
You know, you're not stuck paying for the elevator, you know, I mean.
Is there any salvage value in any of what we've got, antique or otherwise, or just scrap metal?
I think you could donate it to a museum if you wanted to. Yeah, the doors and all that kind of, it's, it's just, it'd just be of some collector or something, but I don't know who you.
Are there any implications that you're aware of that would injure our status, reduce our status? Derank us with the South Coast Historical Society, the Deadwood Grant operation and all that? If we replace a historically correct elevator, eight-hundred-year-old building with a modern contraption?
I think because we spent a long time researching, trying to replace it and keep it, we've done everything we can and they're reasonable, I mean, if you can't do it, you can't do it.
If you might, I've had, I've had that in mind since getting into this process and I had to unfollow the Rams and I was on the phone with the Rams today. I have for this region. I have asked them to take a look at this and they get, get them on our side, any limitations that you make. They spoke, what you just said, in light of the different, from a different perspective is, is that there's very little, almost none, elevator restoration going on because most of these elevators apparently were taken out in the nineteen sixties and the nineteen seventies.
Wouldn't they should have probably been?
And, and I talked, and I talked with them, they're willing, you know, the, I talked with them about doing what we can to make it look historically correct. And our initial conversations on that are positive, you know, the simple things like putting bronze doors on there instead of brushed aluminum doors, brass stand, whatever that is, that kind of thing. Doing the, we could make it look better than what just the cheapest elevator in the world that goes in. They're, they're comfortable with that, you know, initially, but what I'm doing is, I'm talking with them, getting them in at the beginning of this, so that they don't come in halfway through it and say, we really wish you wouldn't do that. I've got them involved at the beginning, so they are at the beginning and they're aware of this and at some point they, they'll want to talk with us.
I'm about just forgetting about the historical value going over on the north side of the building and just putting a new elevator up outside, it's cheaper than trying to retrofit that one?
No, then you'd have to build the whole tower and the whole, it'd be the same elevator, it'd just be new construction out there. So instead of just taking the doors out and putting new doors in, you'd have to build the shaft, foundations, steel frame, brick, so it's fireproof and everything. Break a hole in somebody's office over here wherever it's gonna come in, you know?
Well, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
You have this one all out, build a whole new shaft over here and get it out of there. You could leave it there, look historic, hold it for somewhere else.
That would be, I hadn't thought of it from that way, if you wanted, let's leave it for the historic, then you probably could.
Lock the door shut and call them.
Here's what they do.
I sound like the problem with that is, it's gonna cause even more because of having to build the structure around it, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get this one out to get them in.
It's pretty routine, though, the shaft goes up and then they come, the car comes apart, they'll get it out of there. Another thing the general contractor will do is get that one out of there, but we'll be using the same shaft.
Now, talking with these guys, why don't you get a size down with the size of?
They come in pieces, they take them apart.
Yeah, both elevators are bigger than this one.
Yeah, that's the first thing when I'm talking, we, we have a new Otis guy, by the way, so it's.
We got a new Schumacher guy.
At least the guy called me back within an hour, the second guy. And I gave him.
That's better, I've never gotten to do that.
I just wanna look at this thing outside of the box and say, just look at that, there's one, one way street because most of the time, what little money we get, throw it into that Deadwood Grant or whatever, that's not enough and anyway, really, so.
Compared to what this costs?
Compared to what it's, our share of it's gonna cost.
Well, one of the things that I, in my, I've realized listening to you, that I made an assumption on this, this is a core assumption. The assumption is all of them, if we replace the elevator, they build a car that matches the existing shaft.
No, we, we give them the shaft size, they tell us which model.
Okay, that's what I mean, they put, they don't tear the shaft out, they use, they use the existing shaft, that's what I was thinking.
So, see, we, we have to give them the shaft and then I work with them to figure out which model. Then we can look at which options we can get with this, it's kind of like almost buying a car.
So that's us, all that we run through before we can even talk about any of this.
That's what we do when we start doing the plans, that's all the stuff that has to go in there. That's why you hire me, I get started on that and then as we go through, you know, bring what, what models each of them will have that'll fit in there, we'll maybe look at some options to put those in the plans and specs, we'll look at those completion dates.
What would your title be in this operation?
We're the design engineers or?
Okay, so you would be the primary engineer for our elevator, okay.
Project engineer.
Project engineer, okay, that's what we call it. Do we have to do bids on that?
No.
Not on engineering. The most we would need is some sort of engagement letter from them.
Maybe a welcome one.
I'm looking at our fee's gonna be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range. That includes all the stuff we've done to get here.
So I mentioned, Will, a concern that I have, that I'm sure you guys maybe have in the back of your minds, but it never seems to be articulated, I have failed in that front too. The third floor is actually not owned, but it very much is operated by the state of South Coast judicial system. That's where witness rooms are, that's where jury rooms are, that's where the courtroom is, that's where the judges' chambers are, that's where all of those things, the clerk of courts is up there. And she's the state clerk of courts, she's not a county employee, she works for the judicial system. If they don't have access to that floor, that third floor, we are in deep trouble. We're not fulfilling our obligations as a county government. So we've got to make sure we've got a working elevator. And we we can't be down for six months getting this done. How long are we going to be down, you think?
Well, I'll have to see what they're what they're thinking the supplies will be. The construction itself won't take that long, it'll just be when the equipment can get here.
You think a month?
I think a month is pretty unrealistic, it'll be a two month construction problem. Just, you know, two months sounds like a long time, except when you're trying to schedule the electrician in here, and then you gotta have the roofer in here and have these other masons come in and everybody's got something to do that week. So then you, it's to get everything stacked up and get it all complete, it just takes time, that's.
It does.
So we'd we'd have to do some coordination with those guys or something to see if there's some time that's better or, I mean, that, it's like when we fix the roads or something, you just have to make a detour. Everybody has a reason why they need it the whole time, but the fact of the matter is it takes time to build things and that's, you know, don't kill the messenger, that's just. I don't want to give you any kind of faults, you know, this will all work, it'll be fine because there's going to be some conflicts.
You're going to send us a letter, as I understand this, an engagement letter, is that right?
Again.
Okay, that'll be fast.
Yeah, then it's good to have it, so we have it in writing like that.
I'm just going to have to coordinate everybody, it's going to take place, but until we get some idea what's going to take place.
Yeah, there's there's, I don't, you know, that's kind of a planning process, we're going to need some time to get a plan ready and get that coordinated and see if we spend a little time getting a good plan together that they can build and we have the parts that will fit, the construction will go faster. If we quick do it and then we're in the middle and something doesn't fit and get a reorder of the things, things can go south through the fast. And especially if you need it. If it didn't matter, they'd have it done a month, that'd be my guess. Nobody cares, it's done, but boy, if you need it.
There are a couple of things that that come about about this is that one, I wanted to have this this discussion with you because the elevator stopped working and somebody got trapped in the elevator and I didn't want the roof going to go churning. The elevator, I wanted you gentlemen to understand the elevator is under control and somebody comes and somebody asks you about it, it's been maintained and there's and we're working on a plan to deal with it.
Shouldn't even count.
And the the thing with the courtroom upstairs is, well, that's going to be the thing, I do not foresee in the end any having any heartburn, any real problem from the state historical society if we do what we're already doing, which is including them in it and making them understand that there's not an elevator company in the world that's going to put an open elevator car in a modern building, it ain't happening. The insurance, and I've explained it to them, and they seem to understand that insurance companies are not going to let it do it. And one of the options that we have if we're down for two months, it's not a great option, but as we get into this, we we can talk with the court and make arrangements to, very temporarily, the court have a new assembly room set. It's on the first floor, there's not a lot of space down there, but typically they're not, they don't pack the courtroom. We could make that, you know, we got it, got it, got with them ahead of time and scheduled that, let them know that that was going and help them set up, and I would help them set up whatever they needed down there. They can have four down there until we get the elevator.
This looks like to me, we're so far away from that point right now that we're not native to the ground talking about.
Yeah.
We just need to engage some people and move forward.
Yes, sir.
I agree. And, you know, we can limit the time the car is down in the construction process, you know, we have the overall completion date, you know, so they can start like, we can make them leave the elevator operating while they run new electrical service, like while they fix the access up there, all that, you know, we can, we can put some interim instructions in there to, you know, but there is going to be a time when it's not going to be there. I mean, that's.
Obviously. Put all these stairs in the building, stairs are going to get tore up, it'll take a while to put them back here.
Yeah.
It's just going to happen, we just got to decide how we're going to move forward here.
I think we made a lot of progress today. We're in receipt soon of your.
I think you've done a good job and Will's done a good job to satisfy the historical guys. You know, you also have a responsibility of the handicap people and the older people. But really, the handicap is, you know, that's a law too, you have to do that.
Yes, we owe people accessibility, not only to county services, but to state services. And we owe them safe access. Everything else is secondary.
There we am. And reliable too, that you don't need to scare the old ladies every time they get a ride, you know. See, there there are mechanical brakes on that too that keep it from falling, you know, if it gets loose, the the brakes clamp up on it. So the danger of falling is very, very, you know, you don't ever say never, but there the safety things are still working, that's some of the things that.
Those are tested every year.
Yeah, see, so that, I mean, that it's, it's just.
Number zero, we need one negative zero.
Right, and yeah, and then if this thing goes up there and it keeps going.
Then it crashed one time.
And then I think the court thing is only a couple of days a month, isn't it? Thing is only a couple of days a month, isn't it?
Theoretically, it's once a month, it used to be twice a month, but there are times, I'm sure, when it could be daily for three weeks.
They end up with a long project or something, you never know.
Yeah, they did that positions two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, then you can have an operator standing by those court days so you can use the elevator till we get this sorted out, you know, so it's reliable. You know, so you don't have to worry about it.
Well, I think you're just right, we're getting the cart to head the horse, we don't need to worry about that now.
We, once you get into the planning stages where you've got some time off, it's actually coming from again, then you can talk to them about that, what their schedule is, look at it, see if we can speed around stuff. Anyway, I think we need to hire somebody and get started. We're all for it. I think we can talk about all we want, we ain't, none of us going to get one done.
Just go ahead and make motion to Iris and then I'll send a letter with the price we can prove that.
Is that appropriate for this juncture?
Yeah. For no, for no more, no more than we've been able to get somebody here to even discuss this project. I'm saying if somebody's here to to get started on it.
We need to do something, move forward. I move that we accept a proposal from you.
I say.
Namely, it's the project engineer.
And if you could present us with.
With the number and things.
With, you know, with your quota, what you cost and what you do for us as the project engineer.
Manager with everyone.
Yeah, we'll act on that and go forth.
May a substantive motion be that the chairman be authorized to execute that agreement?
Yeah, that would be an excellent addition to that motion. Is there a second to that? I mean, did he second me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. We're headed your direction, you got our stuff.
Almost out of here before we were supposed to be here.
Go tell your ride in the elevator.
My phone number's in there if you need to.
Yeah, spare time.
Thank you very much.
We are, we, I have the three contracts, well, actually, three for Dale Shoes Painting, one for Infinity Scaffolding, one for GPI Incorporated, the plaster project. I would, also, we've gotten one check from the insurance company and we've not gotten a statement of loss, they were, the check is in the mail, literally, they tell me, we got, what I would suggest that we do for this, I had every intention of coming in here and have the the contracts with the plaster, Infinity Scaffolding and Painting signed to date, but I think we need, because I think we need to wait, and here's why. We have two claims with the insurance company. The insurance company has sent us a check for ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars for the assembly room. Now, that is, what they have done is the total price for that room down there as an example, was eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy six dollars minus the two hundred and fifty dollars deductible. The insurance adjuster told me that he was going to send a check based on actual cash value, standard procedure, he deduct, he depreciated the room down there by approximately four and a half percent. Once the repairs are done, he will, and we show him that the repairs are done, they will pay the balance. If, in this particular case, they are subrogating against Midwest Pipelining's, Midwest Pipelining's Insurance Company, and if they're successful in their subrogation, they will return the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible. The only issue is they have not, they have not given me a statement of loss and they have not given, well, it hasn't arrived yet, the statement of loss or the check for the the rotunda work that they are liable for. The total amount, by my estimation, the total amount that they owe us, they being the insurance company, is fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. What I would suggest that we do, I hate to, I am assuming that these numbers are all going to match up and that we're good and we will, we need to go ahead and proceed. But I hate to use the word assume in fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and seven in the same sentence. What I would suggest that we do is just hold off a couple of days until we get all of the paperwork from the insurance company and it's most, I thought it was going to be here by today, it's not. Let's get it all here, let's get it verified, then we know for certain sure that everything, that there's not a problem with the insurance company. They tell me there's not, I don't think there is, but I don't want you gentlemen to sign this until we got all the, we got that check in our hands. Settlement and writing. And and they sent a letter, but they did not send a statement of loss.
I think it has to be common, they withhold some until you complete the work.
Certainly.
Because if you just decide you're going to pocket the money and not do the work, you'd never get that last portion.
And people do it all the time, it's just, I find it kind of strange that, you know, they they just had to come up with a number. Four percent depreciation on the building, the building's ninety, almost a hundred years old, they had to make pay, so they had to come up, you know, that just stand, they just had to come up with it, so. But there again, I mean, we could sign these things today, but what I would recommend is let's just be certain sure that, and if there is any problems, deal with those problems, and if you authorize somebody to sign the contract after we've got all the information from the insurance company.
Because we're kind of acting as a general contractor, you have that.
Yes, exactly.
So are all of these folks licensed and bonded and everything?
And they are.
Several people mentioned this, that we have local people who are a hundred percent capable of doing our painting, and we wouldn't have to go out of town to get that done. What are your thoughts on that, Will?
Well, we're dealing with some very specialized painting and we're dealing with painting at the top of the rotunda.
Yeah, I don't know anything.
As opposed to the assembly?
I don't know anything.
Now, the assembly, now, the the assembly room is, we probably could find somebody to do the assembly room, but essentially, we're getting a, we're getting a discount price for these guys, he's doing the assembly room and he's doing the, doing the, the plaster. The the paint for the, the, the assembly room is not that expensive, so.
The the painting itself.
The painting for the assembly room is not, we're talking about twenty four hundred dollars.
And how about the courtroom?
The courtroom, we're talking about forty eight hundred dollars in the courtroom, we're talking.
Could the painting in the courtroom and the assembly room be let locally? Let local people do that?
You want to pay more for the other deal?
That's what my question is. We want to make it a triple for somebody who did it all? We're saving money, are we likely to save any money?
Uh, I don't think that we will. You know, we can go back and, we can step back and take a look at that. What I had done, the approach that I've taken with this is, is trying to get all of it done at one time. And the end result was, was especially, the the thing that really complicated is we're going, we're trying to, we, the assembly room came pretty much as an afterthought. The big thing was getting the, was getting this area out here dealt with, that meant getting the scaffolding in, that meant people just kept running away from it because of the scaffolding. And then it, we included the courtroom, the courtroom has got some very specialized plaster work and painting going on in there to make it look, the the goal is to make it look like what it did when it was built in nineteen twenty six and opened. The assembly room, that is, that has become more of a, that is an add-on thing because of what happened.
Julie King?
Yeah.
I believe she did.
Now, if you guys want to, we can take it, but now there there's the issue of local, we can take a step, we can deal with the plastering and the rotunda and the plaster in the courtroom and take a step back and see if we can find somebody local to do that down there.
Chair, I can't remember who it was, but it seems to me it was somebody local too.
It was Julie King.
Okay. She did a wonderful job.
Yes, she did, and she also painted the gold leaf and stuff.
Yeah, beautiful.
I mean, the paint was terribly expensive, Julie doesn't paint anymore.
All right, but we both know people that do.
Right, exactly.
Are they licensed and insured painters? I know people that paint too, but if they fall and break their arm, then what? You know, I I don't know that any of their license and insured.
I know my contractors, people on.
That's true.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to hires or more than that.
The only thing is, if you put a bid out, nobody bids on it, then you're safe, you know what I mean? And if you say, and they have to be licensed and not, you know, bonded and all that stuff, and we get no bids, then, you know, at least the community thinks you did your due diligence.
I know we still catch a lot of shit over the chairs. Right, it was at a volleyball match, it's got, we were in half of that match talking about, yeah, we went out and.
Yeah, so.
Well.
Because then all you would get is those people that meet your qualifications, and if they don't meet them, they won't be getting it.
Yeah. Well, here's the thing, if you want to, you know, this is a public entity, if, and I had been focused myself, I mean, I'm just a custodian, as a custodian, I had been focused first on getting that expert out here to deal with that rotunda and then we added on to that. And frankly, and the, it ta, it takes a very skilled painter and blaster, one, it took me three years trying to deal with the, to deal with the, the courtroom. Like I said, you said, now, we can, we can certainly stop and say, all right, let's, let's just take a step back from this and not sign these contracts and see if I get with Doug and see if we can find somebody to bid some of the painting. And if we do, great, if not, then, you know, due diligence has been done and.
I don't think it's in the cards for us to get the painting done and one fell swoop by one front. It's almost necessarily divided into three different time periods. One, the rotunda after this massive scaffolding has been.
Well, one of the things, one of, go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying, that is a timeframe that's going to be much different than the assembly room.
Well, the plaster, the plaster, the plaster wants, wants one contract divided into three phases, obviously.
That makes sense to me.
And what he's going, you know, I was like, give you treatment, he said, now, I need to have everybody mobilized and go from one to the other. He will treat it as three separate ones because he will do, start with the assembly room, get that finished. If the scaffolding is up, by the time he's finished, he'll go up there, if the scaffolding is not up, he will go up to the courtroom while they put the scaffolding up, but then he will take it. So his crew is going from one, he wants to, his crew to go from one place to the next place.
Yeah, we don't want him to have to assemble scaffolding.
And they, they'll, they'll use their scaffolding in the assembly room and in the courtroom, they'll use Infinity Scaffolding for the rotunda. So, but he's planning on, he said, his thing is, look, I just want to, I want to. So, but he's planning on, he said, his thing is, look, I just wanna, I want to come do all three. I will do it in order. That's something else I wanted to discuss with you. Uh, here's the thing, this, the, the plaster, we most definitely are dealing with somebody who, uh, we most definitely dealing with a specialist there. The paint on that, up there on the third floor, and that, we're dealing with a specialist, somebody that really knows painting, and knows how to deal with this, deal with those capitals and those, uh...
You're talking about the rotunda.
The rotunda, especially the rotunda. And even the courtroom, I mean, we're talking about, you know, there are people out there that exist, but I've not been able to find them locally that, uh, can do that.
Not anybody locally, you know, climbing a scaffold, big bad deal. Well, we're, we're just gonna drag it out further, guys. We've been fighting this deal forever, discussing it forever. We get somebody out of Doc, we finally do it, now we're gonna tear it down into pieces again and start over again.
Um, you know...
We get a guy that's coming in here, he's probably wants the whole thing done, make it worth his time, why would he be in here? If somebody else would like to take the whole deal on, then fine, I guess we could get the old deal.
But isn't the painter that we've got the bid from only talking about one of the three?
No, he's talking about doing all three of them.
At three different times?
Well, but they're gonna, well, he's willing to divide, he divided it up into three separate contracts, but he wants to come and do all three of them.
I thought he said, like, fucking scaffolding up there, he's gonna paint over here if they don't have it.
Now, we're, now, we're, we are dealing with two contracts, the plaster and the paint.
Yes.
The plaster, the painter sent three separate contracts, but he's of the same mind. He wants to start one, and when he finishes one, he wants to go to the other one, then he wants to go to the other one. He just happened to give us, he just happened to give us three, and Shorty Grunewald just said, no, 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 I only want one.
The painting, that only says assembly room, ceilings, and partial walls.
That's just, that's one.
I know, but we need paint three different places.
There's three of them.
Where's the other one?
It should be in there.
Scroll over. I apologize. Let me see, it was lower on the page.
Wait, you get a crew in-house, I can see where he's coming from, you know?
Now, there's actually three, there's, uh, forty, Dale Shoes Painting, forty-eight, uh, forty-eight, forty...
I see them.
For, uh, if you see one there for fifteen, eight hundred, disregard that. They did that for the insurance company, cause that's what the insurance company owes for the paint. They're talking about fifteen thousand dollars in paint at the top of the rotunda. Uh, painting the rotunda and all the third floor up there comes to fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty. That's doing all of the public area down to the, uh, down to the marble up there. And the ceiling room, the, uh, the assembly room is twenty-four hundred dollars. That, uh, included in that, you will see the, uh, fifteen thousand, eight hundred from Dale Shoes Painting. Disregard that, that was strictly for the insurance company for their documentation. That's included in the fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty. So, all of that comes back to the insurance company owes us fifty-nine thousand dollars. I say, well, you know, if we go with this, I say we wait until we get the, the, the full statement of loss and the check in hand, and the statement of loss, that, you know, I'm making an assumption when I say that they've depreciated it, uh, by four, uh, approximately four and a half percent, cause they're not giving us any documentation that says that. They told me on the phone they're depreciating, but they're not giving me any documentation that says that, so... What do you gentlemen want to do?
The remainder of that, through insurance, they have given you kind of a... A verbal commitment, obviously, but...
Yes.
They haven't said, well, I'll send you the remainder, or the job needs to be completed for the remainder, or...
Well, they did say about, you know, it's standard operate, it's standard insurance procedure as far as the ACV and the RCB, replacement cost value, just, they will pay the actual cost value, and then after the repair is done, they will repay the remainder. That's pretty, that's standard, you know, the bizarre thing about it is, how do you come up with four and a half percent? They had to come up with something, so I'm willing to live with four and a half percent.
They just picked up.
Totally arbitrary.
It's totally arbitrary. The, uh, it's really, it's one size fits all is what they're doing as far as their procedure. Uh, they have said that they're sending a check for the, it just hasn't arrived, and the statement of loss hasn't arrived on either one of them.
Yeah, I don't have no problem with none of that. Maybe we gotta decide here that, that's alright if we wait for the money, you know? I don't care. Uh, do we wanna do something as far as different about bidding this painting and stuff? We've been wrestling this issue for...
For three, this, this started the day I walked into the...
This be three years we've been wrestling this issue, trying to get somebody committed to do this work.
Yeah, I didn't see those other two.
But now we got a guy committed to doing the whole thing, and if he's waiting on one thing, he's gonna work on the other thing. It makes perfect sense to me, but do also, uh... My heart's still going out to local contractors or whatever, you know, but I haven't seen nobody doing it. I don't know, did we just do a due diligence?
Doug, with that total of all three of those paint projects, do we need to do anything beyond what we've done?
Done.
What is the threshold now?
Fifty. Per project.
Per, okay, so it's three different projects.
Well, one, one of these adds up to, you know, just the, uh, the rotunda is fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty.
We've about exhausted every avenue of trying to get somebody to put a scaffolding up.
Yeah.
We've exhausted, I mean, I'm sure there's other people that like to piece me up some of these jobs, but we've about exhausted three years of work trying to get somebody to say, yeah, I'll do that. And now we got the insurance money. Uh, we got three hours to go forward here, guys.
The, uh, the Deadwood, we have, uh, twenty-three thousand and some change to cover the cost of the, uh, the courtroom. It's been, is part, is the Deadwood grant that I asked for. They will announce whether we get that, uh, after the first of the year, after the first of the year, being January one. Sometime within two weeks of the New Year's, we will know yea or nay on that. We have, uh, it would, it would make it tight, the money is in the budget with, uh, we're talking about seventy-seven. We're talking about, we're talking that if we don't, uh, get that, take the sixty thousand dollars plus another seventeen thousand dollars to cover the cost. That money could come out, uh, it would be tight, but we could come out, uh, the ten thousand for, uh, professional services, and the fifteen thousand for repairing maintenance and cut it, so that, I just, yes. So there's that, so just, I just wanna make sure.
Are these guys, uh, sick today? We said, yeah, we'll be doing it, or whatever it is. Do they have a timeframe that they discuss?
Well, they're ready, they're ready to go. They're, initially, they wanted to start in December in the assembly room, but there was some, there was some, some issues with accounting. Uh, but I was talking with Doug, I think we can might work that out, if they can actually get started in December. The idea is we get started in December in the assembly room. That's the simplest way.
We're talking plaster? Hmm, plaster, paint, any of, any of the...
Well, I'm talking pla, I'm talking, they do the plaster, they do the paint. We're doing it at the same time. These guys are in the building at the same time. As soon as that plaster is up and it's ready to be painted, they're there painting. We're not, you know, and I'm gonna drive apart about, you do not, you do not need to be in here, uh, for weeks and months on end. Get it done. And they're anxious to get, they're anxious, both of them are anxious to get it done well before spring starts, cause they got other things they wanna do, so... So we're talking, I don't know his exact timeframe, but as they get it going, as the plaster goes up, the paint goes on.
Doesn't have to cure for a month?
To my knowledge, no. Soon as we can get it, soon as they can get it, they'll do it.
I move we for, we'll forward with what we got, if that's the case.
The fact that the, uh, it's a scaffolding, that makes a big part of the strategy.
Yep.
Um, top. Once, when, when you're talking thirty thousand dollars for scaffolding, I don't, without any of the work, stuff has to be coordinated.
Yeah, the bonding and the insurance, work will come through all their company people and stuff. They just pulling somebody out of the basement because they need to be, and if these are named employees, you know, it, it's quite a different process, and I think these work really hard to try to get this lined up. I know two or three months ago, we talked about we need to move forward.
How many times have we had people that were going to show up and didn't?
Yeah.
And were going to bid and didn't.
Yep, and if we back up, change the deal now, we might be back to square one for as long as it's here. But that's my two cents from sitting here in the chair.
I move we accept the proposals. I would second that.
You guys wanna wait till the money's in hand?
No.
Do, can we, can we approve this on the condition that we have the, the money in hand and the total?
I would, I would...
Before they start.
My recommendation is, is that just, let's just be as, let's just be, if we have to wait another three week, three days, four days, or the first of next week, my re, I, I would just feel better if we had the heart, had the paper in our hand, the statement of loss from the insurance company.
I would too.
Well, we could make it contingent, that's not...
Contingent on that.
Same motion, contingent upon receipt of that.
Sounds better. We got a first and a second on that.
I wanna, I just wanna make sure too, when we, they said we're licensed and insured. We need to make, cause we're kind of being the general, we need to actually have that certificate of liability, I would assume.
And they told me that they will send that.
From, from, before they are here working.
I would, okay, and I, and I was to get them to get that, I would just, you know, go ahead and send it to me now. They've said that they will, and...
Whatever crew.
Yeah.
You know, if they decide, if they're gonna sub it out part of it to somebody, we wanna know that, we want it on hand. So we have a first and a second. Got it all.
Aye.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Close? What's your care? Two, very quick things, I wanna go, just make sure, you know, uh, we're probably not, we're not gonna get the elaborate done this year. I was on the phone yesterday with Adam in ProTech. Uh, he said that they've told him now that they don't know when they're getting insulation. They also told him that they'll get it before August of next year, but he said if they do, but if you order anything new, we ain't getting it to you till August of next year. So that's the, the only date that they've given them is, any new order is not coming into August of next year, so... Uh, unless a miracle happens the next week, and that was a phrase he used, that thing isn't developed, the, the library is not getting that. The other thing is, this is, uh, an, this falls, this would fall under the category of ongoing expense, but I wanted to let you guys know about it. We've got, uh, I need to replenish, uh, the, uh, the chemicals for the maintenance. Might wanna stock up on the chemicals for the boiler and get, uh, enough treatment for ten thousand gallons of diesel for the purchasing after the first of the year. You add all that stuff, uh, uh, two thirty-five gallon, uh, drums of, uh, chemicals for the, uh, the boiler and the treatment, we're looking at somewhere around twenty-one hundred dollars in chemicals. You know, that would, uh, ta, that would go under, I suppose, under the ongoing expenses, like buying the diesel itself, but that's a chunk of change, and I wanted to just tell you guys about it before, uh, before I just went ahead and purchased it, if that's okay with you.
There are, there are certain things that we can't get caught without.
Yeah, and then, that, they're available right now, I wanna go ahead and get them so that we have them.
Just make sure the short then, too, then, right?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like we need to order some of those.
I gotta order, and I'm gonna have to order a tray and set those things in, yeah. And actually, this is actually good news, unless there's any objections, uh, we will open up the courthouse, uh, the, uh, the week before Thanksgiving and start putting the pre-exam.
The one thing I would say about the roof guy?
Yes, sir.
I wonder, you know, a lot of the reason we're going with the roof is we had problems with that roof. You know, i- is there a specific, something that needs attention in the short term? Like maybe if there's a repair, you know, they can temporarily...
Something that could save the inner structure of the building or other...
I will, I will, I will get on the phone and ask him what we need to do temporarily.
So we don't want the ceilings falling in.
Yeah, right. I do not, I do not...
I don't know how bad, I don't know how bad it really is.
I don't think there's an issue. I think it's an issue if it's being, it needs to be addressed before that happens. But I will talk with him and see if we need to do anything.
Is it a temperature-sensitive fix?
I don't think it's temperature-sensitive, it's just that you reach a point where it just gets cold and there's snow on it.
No, I mean repair.
Uh, I don't know, I don't think so. Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Okay, that's the plants. Old business?
The only thing I have there, is I didn't have a chance, but they're going on, digging a lot further about that funding for the building repairs, that I should have to get for next month.
Payroll, April for October, election meeting. We're gonna go December seventh, Tuesday meeting for next regular meeting. See anything we missed, Doug?
No.
Does anybody have any further discussion on the direction we're going with any of these things? We're way under the pressure of having them guys right in front of us, whether people are later or the ongoing maintenance of the building.
I'm glad we got done what we got done today.
I really, I'd like to answer some questions to me about the elevator, we answered the question that they're gonna use that shaft, there are gonna be certain models that will fit that shaft, and so, you know, them are all questions I had. We're gonna get after gut that whole shaft or what, you know, and to go out and talk about it any more than what we did talk about, it's kind of a waste of time, but he comes back and tells us actually what's possible. They may only have one model that fits in that, well, that solves that problem, you know? And there may be only one way that model can be go in, and that solves another problem, but we need to get into it that far, and I think we did a good thing there by getting somebody that actually knows something about it to start working on it, but...
Do we have, now, am I right in saying that this next year was the last year for that elevator fund?
That we contribute.
That we contribute?
Within those two years, which is that?
So if we wanna, if that's not enough money, which clearly is probably not gonna be, if you come up with that somewhere else, or...
Well, they...
Continuity or whatever you talked about potentially, or whatever.
I think actually we, we'll probably get in the next year's budget.
Oh, we can still have it in the budget, I suppose, not, not put into that fund, I mean.
Right, but we can get it into next year's budget, and we could budget for, hopefully by that time, uh, at least, some costs are, or what our carrier was gonna be on. Don't you think? Man, at least we got it down, or...
Something.
We got it down, or...
It'll be two fifty, January second, at noon.
Rockly.
Depending what time you get up.
No, that's a Sunday.
Oh, Monday, the third.
Third.
Are we done?
Yeah.
I move we turn?
I'm not, you figure out what sort of mark on...
I'll say, I have an idea when we've been out there. I don't think you'd be interested.
Okay, sure. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I said like you just marked DNA in them, so...
H U H.
If I don't put yes, I don't have to answer that one, I understand that one, cause it says...